Trying it now? Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, so if we could stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, his republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we have their roll call, please?
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
John Moody.
Here.
Matthew Muggs.
Here.
Jared Potlott. Chris Williams. Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. Proof of publication, please.
The items are advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on March 5, 2025, and April 30, 2025, or by applicant or certified mailing from site listing.
All right, thank you very much. Any minutes? I don't think there is none.
Nope.
All right, so I'd like to welcome everybody today. We are the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners our recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and however, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the Board of County Commission meeting. Those of you not familiar with the format of the meetings, there are three sections. There are continuances. Those are items where the staff or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our tradition to grant those requests for continuance unless there are extenuating circumstances. We have consent items. We'll go through those items one at a time. As we go through a consent item, if you want to be heard and pulled from consent, raise your hand, we'll pull from consent for discussion. And then we have the regular items. And those are the items that will be fully vetted here today, questions and presentations. Applicants will have five minutes to make their presentation, and questioners will have three minutes to state their concerns or ask their questions following the presentation. The applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and respond to those questions. If there's been a request for additional time, at least 24 hours before this meeting in writing, and I don't think there has been, where they may be granted extra time. Gianna?
Okay, we do not have anybody that requested additional time. However, we do have a couple of individuals signed up with what is today.
All right, thank you very much. So for those of you that are in the audience today, actually everyone that's here, if you have a phone, please take a moment and make sure it's on the silent position so it doesn't disturb anybody that's trying to speak. And before we start the meeting, is there anyone here to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda? Okay. Being no one, so if you plan to give testimony or speak today, if you would please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, I think, Gianna, we're ready?
All right, I think we're ready. Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Gianna German, Planning Development and Economic Growth. Item PC1 is PDE 25-7749, a zoning amendment in the name of Pasco Mine MPUD, and this is coming with the request to continue the item to June 19, 2025, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, and I think let's go through the continuances and then we'll vote.
Item PC2, you'll be sitting as the local planning agency, and this item has a companion rezoning, item PC3. Item PC2 is PDE 25-0109, a comprehensive plan amendment CPA 2403, Elite 52 PD, and this is coming with the request to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this one? I see no one. Okay.
And then item, sorry, go ahead.
PC3?
Yes. PC3 is the companion rezoning to item PC2, PDE 25-7811, a zoning amendment in the name of SR52 Elite-JDP Development LLC, and this is coming with the request to continue the item to a date uncertain, and this is the last item on continuance.
Very good.
Move.
Thank you. Is a applicant present? Anyone here to object? All right. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue item PC1 to June 19 in Newport Ritchie at 1:30, items PC2 and PC3 to a date uncertain.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Further discussion on the motion. All in favor of your motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, and motion carries.
And the first item we have on the consent agenda is item PC4, which we now have individuals signed up to speak, and we ask that this item be moved to the first on the regular agenda.
Okay, so we're pulling PC4?
Yes, sir. And then the last item that we have on the consent agenda is item PC5, PDE 25-2109, a variance request in the name of SC Signature Construction Corp., Inc., for a reduction of the required minimum open yard requirement of not less than 150 feet to 14 feet in an I1, excuse me, light industrial park district as required by the LDC Section 528.9D located in west central Pasco County on Crystal Circle, approximately .25 miles northwest of the intersection of Little Road and Ridge Road, containing approximately .63 acres. This is coming with the recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Mr. Chair, I'll be abstaining from this vote. This is my project.
All right, Mr. Mitty. All right. Okay. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion of the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Okay, that was the remainder of the consent. So the first item we have on the regular is PDE 25-7860, a zoning amendment in the name of Casting LLC Little Road rezoning.
Good afternoon. Brian Junker with Planning Development Economic Growth Department. Today, presenting to you PDE 7868, a zoning amendment under the name of Little Road rezoning. The proposal is a Euclidean rezoning amendment, the zoning changing from PO2 professional office district to C1 neighborhood commercial district. The purpose of the application is proposing change in zoning from PO2 to C1 neighborhood commercial. The location of the site is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Little Road and Jasmine Boulevard. The subject site is located within the Embassy District of the West Market area and is within the urban concentration area. Here is a context map of the subject site. Here is the area map. The future land use that is currently commercial, COM. Current zoning is PO2 as currently mentioned. The project overview, the subject site consists of commercial pursuit of approximately 3.03 acres. Access to the property is from Little Road, a county-maintained arterial roadway with approximately 145 feet of right-of-way, Berries, and Jasmine Boulevard, a county-maintained collector roadway with approximately 80 feet of right-of-way. There is a conceptually planned trail segment under the name of Little Road Trail located west side of Little Road to US 19. Currently, this segment is not a priority in the capital improvement plan, and we'll mention the applicant has volunteered to record a deed restriction. The recommendation comes to you today with approval and request zoning amendment to the Board of the County Commissioners.
All right.
Here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? An applicant present? Anyone here to object?
We do have two individuals signed up for comment on this item.
Okay.
The first individual.
Yeah. Do you want to make your presentation?
Good afternoon, Chairman Gray and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Cindy Terrapani, Terrapani Planning Strategies. I'm a land use planner, and I'm the authorized representative for the applicant-owner Castang LLC, and I have been sworn in today. You'll probably remember this request. It was a plan amendment that you guys heard in October last year, 2024. That plan amendment was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in December of 2024 with sub-area policies, and those sub-area policies specifically prohibited three uses from being located on the site: gas station, car wash, and self-storage facilities. I'm sure you all recall, some of you had those same concerns. Some of the citizens, we had two people here during the hearings before, and they also had concerns about that. Rezoning that we have before you today does include a proposed deed restriction that eliminates those three uses from being developed on the site. Obviously, we heard you, we did the right thing, the commission asked us to do that, and we have complied. This three-acre site is at a signalized intersection of two major roads, Little and Jasmine. Little, as you know, goes north and south throughout pretty much the, almost the entire county. Jasmine is a collector that goes from all the way west to US 19 and to Hilltop Drive on the east. Traffic impact study was prepared for this case by grid engineering, was approved by the Pasco County staff. The study shows that both Little Road and Jasmine operate an acceptable LOS both today and with the project, and the project will only add 1% of new traffic. Additionally, that signalized intersection also operates at an acceptable level of service both today and with the project's traffic added. Our request for C1 zoning with the limited uses per the deed restriction is consistent with the existing commercial corridor of Little Road that runs from State Road 50 on the north all the way to Ridge Road. I've previously submitted these documents to you all, I'm happy to provide them again. The major commercial, at every major intersection of Little Road, there are commercial developments and commercial zoning, and those intersections include State Road 52, this intersection of Jasmine, in which the northwest corner is currently developed with the Walgreens store, Grove Drive, Fox Hollow Drive, Embassy Boulevard slash Hilltop, and Ridge Road on the south. I do have the exhibits, if you would like to see them, that show those intersections. I think I would like to introduce those into the record.
Okay. Have a motion received and filed?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If you'd like to, if you want to get into the details of the report, I certainly can.
Wait to see what the questions are?
Sure. Just as you look at it, just note that the red stars on the maps show where there is commercial zoning and commercial development.
Okay, thank you.
The C1 zoning is obviously consistent with the commercial plan category that the commission approved in December. We also know that you are well aware, and my applicant, the developer, is well aware that the county has detailed regulations for site planning permitting that must be followed. We understand all of those, that we need to develop parking, driveways, buffering, setbacks, et cetera. We believe the rezoning for C1 with the deed restriction at this major intersection is appropriate. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the land development code. Respectfully request your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We have a few minutes for a rebuttal at the end, if I could, sir.
Sure. What do you plan to put there? Do you have a plan yet?
Sorry?
What's the plan to put there? What's the plan to put there?
The applicant, who is the property owner, does not have any buyers lined up yet. We're waiting to go through this process, and then he'll, he is marketing it. But as you can imagine, no one's willing to really step up until the zoning is approved.
Understood. Thank you.
Cindy, you indicated that the, on this exhibit that you handed out, the red stars are commercial?
Commercial uses and/or commercial zoning. And this are based on driving the site as well as aerial photography, and of course, looking at the zoning maps. And the maps that I've provided to you are the zoning maps. They obviously show the commercial zoning locations.
Yes, I just noticed that like the southeast corner of Jasmine and Little, you have a star, a red star there. I don't know if I'm misinterpreting that, but that's not...
It's PO1.
Well, I thought you just said it was commercial.
Well, office and commercial is what we're, I guess I should have made it a little broader. When I say commercial, in this particular case, I'm referring to both office zoning and commercial retail zoning.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, Mr. Doherty.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. I think there are a couple of people who had questions. Are they on the list?
The first person we have signed up to speak is a Mr. Alan Rose.
As you come up, if you give me your name and address, please, for the record.
Alan Rose, 10221 Hilltop Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34654. I have a presentation for you all, if you would accept.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Third, fourth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You want to just hand it to the clerk? So we can start the time when we get these passed out. Okay. Go ahead. All right, go right ahead.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you very much for giving me the time. We at Golden Acres, as we came to you back in the early part of this, I wasn't familiar with how this all worked and didn't have this ready for you. Go on to our community, and our community does not want to see this rezoned. This is a beautiful parcel of three acres. Currently, it's part of Golden Acres, Phase 1, Lot 2. It's designated within our land covenants as a wildlife sanctuary. This is also designated as a residential and agricultural usage within our land covenants. And I brought this, once I went for the first time before you, I had to then go to the county commissioners and brought this to them, because I wasn't prepared for you at the first time. County commissioners, I brought this to them. And they've approved what you've recommended. And the C1 is lesser of all evils, but we would rather it not be approved for that. We would rather it be maintained, to maintain our community. We have a lot of pressure on our community right now from developers. They all want what we have. They want our land. And they want to bring in commercial usage or special case usage, things that will alter and affect how we live. So if this gets approved, it then goes, we then have to take our covenants and pursue them legally, and it becomes a civil matter. That's what I learned at the Board of County Commissioners meeting. We don't want to go there. We just want to have our community maintained as it is. We don't want to lose what we have. You know, and it's, if we start bringing in commercial into what we have, it's going to really dramatically affect the traffic and everything else that comes through our neighborhood. Right now, we're in a blighted commercial area. You can look right down the street, the shops at Golden Acres, all the empty buildings there that can never be filled up. You can go in different locations, down at Ridge and Little. Look at all the empty ones in there. They can't fill them up. You look at all these empty commercial spots, and they are not full. They're still building commercial, because evidently they can make money by changing the land and selling and buying. But look at all the emptiness. All of these empty storefronts that aren't filled. Look what happened to the mall. It's not good for our community. Our community was built to be residential. It's built to be agricultural, small agricultural. They transitioned from us to further out. We need to keep what we have. Right now, you can go, and you see on here, from Star Trail, which is Osceola Heights all the way south to Grove, and you're going to see both communities are ER. There is not one commercial parcel in there. You have a school. You have different things, but they're not in opposition to what we have. You come in with commercial, they haven't decided what they're going to put there yet, and they're going to destroy that three acres. And that's really precious to us. Thank you.
So you said you didn't want it to be C1 commercial?
Right.
What should it be? I voted against the comprehensive plan amendment when it came before us the first time, but now the Board of Commissioners saw fit to change the future land use designation to COM commercial. That only leaves a couple of zoning districts which are suitable for this property. And we can't leave a property without zoning, so what should it be?
Estate residential.
They've already changed the future land use designation to COM.
Can we change that back? Because they did not, because we've been opposing Golden Acres. And if you go between Golden Acres and Hilltop and Osceola Heights, I represent over 200 homeowners that don't want to see this happen. And they haven't been listened, they haven't been heard, and that's why I'm here.
Well, I think to answer your last question, no, you can't change it back, because you're not the property owner.
Okay.
So we're left with what we're left with. And now we have to decide what to do with it. You know, they, you can't, no matter what you think, if you're a neighbor, you can't tell somebody they can't use their property, period. You know, you can't just say, well, we'd like it to be a sanctuary.
And, you know, I hear you with...
You know, but I understand. I lived out there for many, many years. In fact, I had, we had one of the first houses out there. So I know a lot about that area. And I know about, you know, the Osceola Heights area. It's not the same zoning in Osceola Heights, by the way. It's mobile home zoning.
From Star Trail South, it is. They're all ER.
Yeah, I'm talking about north.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it's not ER.
Well, let me ask you this. Would you want to have an estate residence fronting Little Road?
Yeah. You can go down all along Little Road from us down to Ridge Road and see all the nice, beautiful homes there are. And you can go north up until you get to the other side.
I drive that road every day.
Yes, sir.
And I've done it for a great majority of my life. I mean, I see homes that still front on Little Road, and they're being used as home occupations, as offices. These are not pleasant places to live.
Greens Roost has a lot of nice homes in it.
The, when that area was originally developed, there was no Little Road.
I know.
And that's what changed the whole nature of that area there. So a lot of people that have homes on that road now are, they've been there for years. And there's still homes, some homes on there. But you don't see anybody building new homes on Little Road right there. And my sister lives right down the street from that, so I'm very familiar with it. So...
I did contact the next-door neighbor, which they had not done. And the next-door neighbor that abuts that community, he signed the petition to say no as well.
So, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the existing zoning of this property is PO. Residential's not even on the table.
Right.
That's not, not even within your power to decide today.
That's exactly what I was saying, yeah.
The rezonings from office to commercial. Your only choices are office or commercial, not, residential shouldn't even be part of this discussion.
That's what I was trying to tell you when you asked me about, could you change it back?
It was PO2. That would be, have to be acceptable.
And then the covenants on the land, when were those recorded?
They were recorded in '78, and they're valid till 2028.
Till '28?
Yes, sir.
And back when that area was originally developed, they had a fairly strong homeowners association in Golden Acres. And for a long time, we were able to prevent commercial from going there on that section, until they put Little Road in. And that's when all the trouble started. And then the houses between Plaza Drive and Jasmine Drive, you know, they were, they're basically stuck, because they were already there. And now they had a road going through the middle of it, a commercial road. So, you know, the, I think, from a practical point of view, the only way you can keep it from being developed the way you want it is for you to get your organization together and buy the land. Just set it aside, and that way you can control it. That's, you know, that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. I'll bring it out to the community. I appreciate it.
That way you're in total control of it then.
I know. He's looking to sell it.
Then you can change, maybe you can change his zoning back.
Yeah.
You know, but, and as, but as our attorney just told you, you know, the only considerations we have are office or commercial.
Thank you.
So, or that's the situation we're in. But I appreciate your concern, because I lived there for a long time.
Thank you. We just want to preserve what we have as best we can.
I understand that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual we have signed up to speak is a Joanie Wilson.
Tell Ms. Wilson if you just gave your full name and address, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Joan Wilson. My address is 910 Jasmine Boulevard. I'm about two properties down. I'm not fully opposed to the property being developed. My biggest concerns are high-traffic businesses. I know gas stations is out, but there's other businesses like fast food or grocery stores, or, there's just a lot of things that bring a lot of traffic. And also with the migrant population and drug population so nearby, I see a lot of businesses a little further north by 52 that are consumed by people loitering around. We already have a growing homeless population directly across the street on the south side of Jasmine that has gotten worse in the last few months. And I just feel like it's going to bring the wrong kind of people, the wrong kind of traffic to the area. There's a charter school right down the street. They line up in that little, it's not turn lane, but the merge lane right in front of that property. That traffic would then have to be on Little Road, blocking traffic and causing problems for both the school and traffic. There's been numerous accidents there since the last meeting about this in October. Just recently, there was a car flipped on its side. I think that that intersection, particularly with that big hill right there where people can't see as well, I feel like that may increase the amount of accidents there. I don't know why that spot's so bad. You can't safely cross the street there with the amount of traffic there is currently. And adding a business where people might be doing U-turns or trying to come in and out of the business on Jasmine and Little would make things worse, too. Just the pollution, depending on what type of business it is, any kind of runoff from vehicles, like if it were to be like an auto shop or something. A lot of people in the neighborhood have gardens, and a lot of people in the neighborhood have animals that would be affected by that. I...
Well, I don't think an auto shop would be permitted in that.
I don't, yeah, I don't know what is permitted. But I don't mind a low-traffic business, office spaces, or something that doesn't draw a continuous in and out.
Most C1 businesses, you can go on the website and see what's listed under C1, but there are beauty salons, doctor's offices, you know, those kinds of things. You don't have any heavy uses in a C1 zoning.
Grocery stores and fast foods are not...
Not permitted.
It's intended to be a neighborhood use.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer to see it stay office spaces, just because that is much lower traffic than even, like some of the things you mentioned, just people coming and going all day. Office spaces tend to be smaller, attorney's offices, you know, maybe even construction companies or places where there aren't people coming and going continuously. I have to...
That's really what C1 zoning is all about. It's for not the heavy general commercial use, like a shopping center.
Okay. I just feel like, I mean, it still would be a lot more than like an office where people are just coming to work and staying there mostly. You know, businesses where people are coming and going for a purpose throughout the day will cause more traffic. And I have two teenagers that, one's learning to drive. It's bad enough driving as a teenager, just that intersection's horrible. We usually try not to even go that way. But the amount of people coming through the neighborhood is surprising, like that I don't think live in the neighborhood but cut through. And we're right there at the beginning, so anybody coming through will go by our house. We have tons of garbage in our front yard that we have to pick up regularly, including, I mean, like an entire pizza thrown in our front yard one time, baby diapers, alcohol bottles, cans. It's just because everybody's either heading out to Little Road or cutting through, and they don't care. And the people right there where we are, cutting through there, they're usually coming off Little Road speeding. So it just makes it really difficult. And I just feel like there's a lot of things, you know, that an increased traffic in that area, it's going to cause problems.
Okay. Any other questions or suggestions for the speaker? Any more questions for you?
No. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate that. Anybody else on the list?
That was the last individual I had signed up there.
Okay, Ms. Terrapini, you want to come back and respond? I suppose you've had an opportunity to speak to some of the neighbors and...
Yes, actually, I did speak with Mr. Rose. He was, he attended the December Board of County Commissioners meeting in 2024. We spoke to him then. I got his phone number and his email address, and I promised that I would send him, let him know the dates of the hearings, which I did. I have that letter, if you would like to see that. And I spoke to him this morning. I did not, had not spoken to Ms. Wilson before, but she did attend your hearing back in October and said, had the same, similar concerns. She didn't want a gas station. So just to be clear again for the record, a gas station will not be allowed, nor will a car wash, nor will self-storage facilities based on the deed restrictions, should you approve it. Couple other comments. And Ms. Wilson mentioned a homeless camp. This site had a homeless camp also. It had three dilapidated homes that were being used as this homeless camp. When my client purchased the property, he demolished the homes and had the cops clear out the homeless camp. He's recently, about two months ago, had to clear out for a pretty good fee to him, some debris, construction debris that somebody dumped on the site. So clearly, when properties are sitting there, bad things happen. But I think the fact that there is no more homeless camp there and having a real development will be a benefit. Just with regard to Jasmine and people driving through on Jasmine, unless you live on Jasmine, or you live on Hilltop or Osceola or one of those other streets to the east, there's really no reason to drive east on Jasmine. We don't think that very little of our traffic would go there unless they were stopping off on the way home and then continuing home east on Jasmine. It's most likely that our, when we get into site planning, that that access on Jasmine will be a right-in, right-out. We've had that conversations with your staff. So that, again, would also further prevent people going east on Jasmine. So I think there's a little, very little impact with regard to that. Two final things. Number one, office zoning was approved on this site 28 years ago. It sat there for a long time. It had the houses on there. At some point, the houses became dilapidated, not occupied, but no one ever implemented the office zoning on the site. So I think that tells you something. And now with the comp plan category of commercial, I think Mr. Gray said it, Mr. Moody said it also. The only zoning districts that can be put there are C1 or C2. We've agreed to C1 with those deed restrictions. And we respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions from up here? Anybody? Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Cindy. All right, are there a motion? Which number is this one? Or even a motion for purpose of discussion?
Yes.
I think it's four.
PC 4.
Four, okay. Sorry. So I will move to approve PC 4, even though I voted against the comp plan amendment on this property.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second? Is there further discussion on this motion now? Anybody have anything to discuss on the motion?
All right, I'll just add, and then...
All right, I'll just add, and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to, to accept the C1 versus the C2. I mean, considering, and we've had cases like this come before us where you're a signalized intersection of main and sub-main that cries for some type of commercial use. The board's spoken, the board's rezoned, changed the comprehensive plan to commercial use, so I mean, hands are really tied as far as what the zoning can be. So I think the C1 for the residents there, although it's not their desired use, I think it's kind of the lesser of all evils and fortunately, the, the owner has agreed to those C1 uses and those prohibitions that are outlined in the declaration, so.
All right, good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Taylor, just to, just to clean up note, the agenda memo says that the traffic analysis is attached to the agenda, but I don't see that it actually is, unless I'm missing something. So I would ask the make sure that staff, before this goes to the board, that they, if they're going to say the traffic analysis is attached, they actually need to attach it?
Yes, Brian Younger, Planning and Development, Economic Growth. Yes, I will revise and make sure to attach it and make it to you guys.
You can go and vote on that.
Okay.
Application of-
All right, you'll make sure it's attached, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, motion carries. All right.
Next item on the agenda is item PC six. It's PDE 25 dash seven seven eight one, a rezoning request in the name of Enclave at Livingston MPUD presented by staff.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. This is the Enclave at Livingston Master Plan Unit Development. This is item PDE 25 seventy seven eighty one. This request comes before you, rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District with the current future land use of residential six, six dwelling units an acre for the maximum development of 178 platted townhomes on approximately 46 acres. Here is the current site location. This subject site is just north of State Road 54. Current access is off the existing 20-mile level road, roughly half a mile east of the Collier and State Road 54 intersection. Little bit of a contextual map here. The subject property here is outlined in blue. Just to the west, there's the existing Catholic Church and the Academy at the Lakes School. Just to the east is the Terabella MPUD. That MPUD has approximately 730 approved dwelling units. It's a mixture of multifamily, single-family and attached townhomes. And just to the south, you can see those platted townhomes. That is a current MF1 zoning with roughly 90 townhomes at five dwelling units an acre within the residential six future land use. You can see the existing 20-mile level road there outlined in red. And then the darker red shade, and on the subsequent slides, is the current terminus of the Living, Livingston Vision Road, which will provide access to this subject site. This is just an overview of, of what I just mentioned based on the context map. Again, there is category one wetlands that separates the MF1 townhomes from the subject site. The location map, where we can see the, just to the south, those townhomes as well as Terabella, the current zoning reflecting AR, future land use of residential six, the surrounding areas all characterized by residential six as well as some residential nine. This is the MPUD master plan. Really, all this does is illustrate the current wetland site constraints, that large category one wetland in the southern portion of this preventing the interconnection to the currently platted townhomes as well as the code, which already speaks to interconnects not having to occur per section 900 if there are platted units already in the ground. Here is the binding MPUD concept plan. You can see in red, those are rear-loaded townhomes. The orange are front-loaded townhomes, as well as where this subject site will be connecting to Livingston Avenue, as well as improving Livingston Avenue from its terminus to where the project will be accessing. Here is the exhibit showing the, actually, let me go back a slide. The pathway along Livingston Avenue, eight feet, is along the, along the eastern boundary, which will allow for pedestrian circulation internal to this site with the internal sidewalks, but the main boulevard continues north to provide meaningful access, as well as open up the development potential of, of the property to the north and allow for pedestrian circulation, both internal and to future development. Here is the current roadway exhibit, showing the improvements the applicant is providing from the current terminus in the south to their access point, along with the pedestrian facilities, which are along the right-of-way. This is the first phase of Livingston Avenue, which is essentially the first two lanes at a later date. The, the western portion of the overall county vision road will be built, which is 124 feet, shown here on the right-of-way typical. You can see here on the far right of the typical, that is the portion of Livingston Avenue that will be constructed by the applicant, the future lanes and phasing to be constructed at a later time with the, the other 11-foot travel lanes. As this 124 right-of-way typical section is more of a boulevard concept with the large median. With that, that comes with a recommendation of approval from Planning, Development, Economic Growth. I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for William?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So William, this is a little better than the prior application because you at least attached something, but what appears that you attached is the timing and phasing methodology statement, not the actual traffic study.
So that is correct. I do have the, the timing and phasing. I took this project from a staff member prior to their leaving the county. The agenda had already been approved. Once I realized, hey, this staff member only put in the methodology, I will put the, the full 90-page timing phasing into the, into the agenda prior to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right.
For the record, the clerk's office received letters from staff. I apologize.
I had that written down as my first thing to say. There are partake communications that were provided to the clerk's office prior to this meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you, William. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, 8627 Graham Boulevard, Newport Ritchie. While they're bringing up that PowerPoint, I can hand out something I'd like you to look at.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had a neighborhood meeting on Monday evening and there were some good questions and I wanted to make sure that we put forward, I always do that, right? If we tell somebody something, I make sure we put it in a condition. So we can go over these, but I wanted to just tell you what the background was with that. You've seen the project context map from, from Will. This is the future land use map, Res nine to our west. We're in a sea of Res six here, urban service area, urban concentration area. This is our project. It's called the enclave because it sits back behind these wetlands. You can see the wetlands on the eastern side between 20-mile level road and this project, and that's how it got its name, the enclave at Livingston. As you, staff has already explained to you, there are those four rows of rearloads and then on the outside are the frontloads, something the board has been asking projects to do. As you can see from the revised conditions, the, the client has committed to, the minimum lot width for these units will be 24 feet. Right now, the conditions would allow 20. And the maximum number of units per building will be six. Right now, the conditions would allow them to all be eight-unit buildings. This is the product, the frontload and then the rearload. We're proposing 178 units. The, the existing land use that the Board of County Commissioners, the county put on this property years ago, is Res six. We could be allowed up to 215 units. We're proposing 178 as a maximum, that's 5.32 units per acre. Project compatibility, it's already been found consistent along 20-mile level road to have three-story apartments directly adjacent to 20-mile level road. There's 311 of those units. That density is about 18.37 units per acre, so 18.73, 18 units per acre is compatible with 20-mile level road. Also, there's a four-story building directly adjacent to 20-mile level road. As you can see here, there's 140 apartments consisting of independent living, assisted living and memory care. To the south is a similar townhome project, is a similar density. The density there is five units per acre. This project is 5.32, very similar densities. And then we put an impact and mobility fee slide, just says what the total mobility fees were. There's something that came up at our neighborhood meeting, you know, what does, what do projects pay? I don't think everybody recognizes the amount of fees that are paid by these projects. Some key conditions that I would point out. One, we've agreed to a binding concept plan. Two, we've agreed to access easements for our interconnections to make sure that those are true interconnections to the north and the west and they can't be gated and that the public can use those for true interconnections. We're dedicating right-of-way for future further extension of living road, Livingston extension. We're dedicating a 30-foot wide area for an existing reclaimed water lane, that waterline that's not in an easement. We are constructing a portion of the vision road for no mobility fee credits. A portion of our project, as you can see on the binding plan, is required to have rear-loaded townhomes. We've agreed to exceed the code regarding visitor parking. We have to have a minimum of .25 visitor spaces per residential unit, and the key to that is that they have to be located outside of the driveway and outside of the garage. So we can't take credit for the driveway and the garage, like the code allows, for visitor parking. We are, I have my team here and I think we'll just wait to kind of see what the public comment is and we'll provide more information after that.
Barbara, I have a question about one of your conditions. Your first condition talks about stabilizing Livingston Road Extension and using it for construction access. Are you saying that, first of all, when would you do? Are you saying you're going to stabilize it before you start?
We're going to stabilize it for, before we have construction traffic entering the site. And I can work on that language with you if you want, but that's the-
But I guess my bigger question is, does that mean you're not going to do any, have any construction traffic on 20-mile level road?
I think the only thing that will happen is when you have to get the equipment up to this location and mobilize the equipment, but once, and we can, and we can work on language, once the equipment's mobilized to do the stabilization, all of the work's going to come up from 20-mile, excuse me, from Livingston Road Extension. This was, this was a question, a very good question by the residents and wanting to make sure that we weren't going to use 20-mile level road for our construction traffic every day.
So are the, are your utilities that you need for the site, you don't need to do any additional work in 20-mile level road for that?
There are utilities work, work will have to be done in 20-mile level road.
And I think you need to maybe clean up this-
Okay.
-language a little bit to make it clear what construction traffic will continue to use 20-mile level road and what won't, because I, this-
It's a little vague.
This makes it sound like all of your construction access is going to be using Livingston and it doesn't sound like that's totally accurate.
Sounds good, yes. The thought is there. I can clean up the language certainly. Thank you for reminding me.
All right. Is the 24-foot minimum lot width for front loaded townhomes, is that a new condition or is that a concession?
It's on the MPUD plan. The dimensional, you can, if you-
I'm not seeing it in the-
Yeah, it's on the MPUD plan.
Okay.
The minimum width of 20 is on the MPUD plan.
Got you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. All right, is there anybody here that would like to ask some questions or speak?
The first individual that we have signed up for comment is a Ms. Susan Lang.
All right. Ms. Lang, you gave us your full name, Ms. Lang, and your address.
My name is Susan Lang. I reside at 2720 20-mile level road. I want to thank you guys for your time and consideration today. My main concerns in opposition to the product revolves pretty much around traffic, safety, density and some inconsistencies in the documents provided. The thousand-square foot or a thousand-foot of Livingston to the north of Highway 54 is a little road that has a lot of traffic. Connected to that is Venezia Drive, which connects Terabella or Viabella Drive to Livingston. It dead ends at both ends. There are approximately the 311 or 331 apartments that utilize Livingston, that little snip. There's about 253 homes in Terabella. There's a senior living facility. There's a Florida medical building and the commercial right there on 54. On 54, from the east side of Collier Parkway to Viabella is one mile. And in that one mile, there have been over 415 accidents between 2011 and 2022. Approximately 100 of those accidents occurred at that Livingston State Road 54 intersection. There were two fatalities. In the same timeframe, the interchange at I-75 and State Road 56 had over 500 accidents, no fatalities. Also, at Old State Road 54 and 56, there were about 40, 46 crashes or so, no fatalities. The capacity of the signal at Livingston and State Road 54 will become overburdened with the addition of 500-plus vehicles and the level of service will fail. When this happens, who's going to be responsible for that? Is that going to be Pasco County or is that DOT? According to the timing and methodology report that was given to me by Pasco County, it was put together July 21st of '23. The traffic count did not include a count on 20-mile level, nor did it include anything on Venezia Drive. If the existing count, which was done on the north side of Livingston, if it was done north of that Venezia Drive, it's only going to count the traffic to the senior living facility, which would give you some bad numbers. This is a unique intersection where a dead-end road, it's a dirt road, 20-mile level, that is soon to be connected to this Livingston extension. It needs a more conclusive count for safety issues. I checked on Pasco County's site. There's something called Pasco Lives or Pasco Lives, and in there, in the housing element, items four and five, it suggests that Pasco County should utilize land strategically and adopt a gentle density to not affect the approach of single-family neighborhoods and it doesn't affect the feel or character of those neighborhoods. So I'm asking the planning commission to request a current traffic count, including 20-mile level road and Venezia Drive, as well as a reduction in density of the planned development by at least 50%. Also, if the traffic count could include morning times, that would be critical. I don't believe it has the morning times right now. I believe it was restricted. In conclusion, I'd like some answers to some questions. On the docket today, it says Island Property Partners. Who is that? Nobody can answer this question. We're told it's Stanley Martin doing the development. Who is Island Property Partners? Also, were the permits pulled for this development? Was it done by Island Property Partners or was it done by Stanley Martin? On the methodology report, on the map, it lists Vanilla Drive behind the commercial businesses on State Road 54. There is no Vidella, Vanilla Drive in Pasco County. It's Venezia Drive. I don't know who produces this report, but they need to correct it. The same methodology report says the zoning was going from AR to MF1. I'd like to know how we got to MPUD, and I'm new at this, so I don't know. Last thing is that we were told that they would keep 20-mile level open and we would like that, but yet on the documents in front of you with the exhibits A, B, and C, it says it's still closed. So I just want some clarification. I'm asking for you guys to postpone this today so that further review and corrections can be made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else on the list?
I'm going to go through the in-person list and then we can jump to WebEx. The next individual that I have signed up in person is a Ms. Melody Kelly.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Melody Kelly, 2125 Sweep Room Circle, Apartment 104, Lutz, Florida, 33559. Can you follow up?
You want the school party?
Yeah. We were provided, and this is also on the public record, for the school board, for the impact study for where the residents living in those townhomes where their children would be zoned for. As you can see, Roushi and Sunlake are at 100% and 107% capacity. Academy of the Lakes is currently the ones who have the property. They could expand theirs, but their tuition is very expensive. But my other concerns, and then can you pull up the traffic impact study? So this traffic impact, the phasing and methodology was done in, was at least met in the '23. Scroll to the bottom. I contacted the FDOP to see who is in charge, but since it's not a state road, that is up to the county. I could not get clarification. But if you look all the way to the bottom, this is what we have. The terminus that was mentioned by the gentleman earlier, further down. It says Livingston Avenue, State Road 54, and Vanilla Drive. That's, does not exist. That's supposed to be Venezia Drive. They might change it, they might not. If you could pull up the satellites, please? The 178 townhomes will also affect the Huntington Ridge residents because we do not know what the setback will be. Keeping this as agricultural, it will at least be helpful for during hurricane season with heavy rains and flooding. There's also, as you can see, highlighted in blue, the Venezia Drive. We also have pointed out the fact that there's Huntington Ridge when Stanley Morgan shows their enclave. There, cut off, right at the bottom, you can see their pool and those properties. Doing any sort of cutoff on Livingston Road will also impact the fact that there are senior residence facilities, and you have to get an ER. And the only way you can get to that is through State Road 54. So if we block off Livingston, we also block stuff off further to the north. It is also a danger to anyone at the medical, Florida Medical Clinic offices that are nearby, any of the senior residents, anyone living in the area, firefighters, EMS. So I propose that we postpone this and not change it from agricultural, because as stated earlier, if it is changed, it cannot be changed back. Meaning that if it is changed and something bad happens, such as flooding, sinkholes, anything disaster-wise, that will be on the county, and that will cost us a lot more money. So if you do not mind, I have proposed that you postpone this to not change it from agricultural because it would impact a lot more people than originally proposed and acknowledged.
So what would be the purpose of a continuance?
To leave it be. Let nature be there. It could be expanded to the academy, to the church that is nearby, to the other church that is to the north, have more community spaces, especially because the townhomes itself will not be gated. They will be, the prices are high 300s to $500,000.
I'm not understanding your request. You're asking that we postpone this. Are you asking that we deny this or just postpone making this?
I think y'all should, I think y'all should deny it, but I know that there is more likely a postpone. So I say deny.
Okay, I understand.
Do you have any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have, you say we have somebody on WebEx?
We have just a few more signed up for in-person comment. The next that we have is a Ms. Laura Rice.
Welcome, Ms. Rice. If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name is Laura Rice. My address is 5425 Angelonia Terrace in Land O' Lakes, Florida. I'm in the Dupree, right off of Collier Parkway. I think that this should be absolutely denied. As a medical provider myself, I see a lot of the struggles of parents and my patients and the affordability of childcare as well as school spaces for children. And I think this land would be much better served in the community and adding, like, the rec center. It's on a lottery system now because so many people want to have their children there because it's the only affordable option for childcare during summertime and spring breaks and things like that. And people were chomping at the bit because otherwise it's $250 a week per child. That's, if you have two children, $2,000 a month in this economy, it's killing people. And even as a healthcare provider myself, my other half does not make a fraction of what I do. I am the head of household, and we still struggle with paying for childcare. I am very blessed that my daughter will be finally going into kindergarten, which helps. But I think this better, this would be better served for our community, as well as the danger of the traffic. I was trying to get to my sister's house at 1:00 on a Saturday, and traffic was backed up from the interstate all the way past Collier Parkway and almost to Highway 41 at 1:00 on a Saturday. If you add 178, you know, more houses that they said are going to be two and three bedrooms, think about the amount of cars that that's going to add to that area. I feel like before any development of extra houses and things like that should be done, we should be looking at this land and what we could do with these lands for our community and for the needs of our community and struggling parents and struggling citizens. The assisted living facility there, it's very rare to find memory care, and as a provider specifically to older adults, memory care facilities and things like that are a necessity. People are struggling to care for their loved ones who are getting violent, who are trying to leave the house in the middle of the night because of sundowners and things like that. I just, I think it would be a very big disservice to our community to put more houses there that are outside of a working parent's income. And especially so without making sure that our infrastructure and our community needs are met. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions from up here?
No. I don't have any questions for the speaker, but since now this is the third speaker in a row that has raised traffic issues with this application, I'm increasingly concerned that we don't have the traffic study for this project. Could anybody email us the traffic study? I mean, all we have in our application packet is a methodology statement that may not even be right because it's talking about a rezoning to MF1. I mean, does anybody have the actual traffic analysis for this that they can send it to the Planning Commission?
I see SN raising his hand.
And can we get a summary with the results where the traffic analysis? You can, you can sit down now. I'm just trying to get somebody to-
I just had one other thing real quick. So to go from Collier Parkway, the northern by Hale, down to turn onto 54 takes almost 20 minutes to go that small four-mile distance because the problem is, is people cannot turn from Collier onto 54 also, again, due to that traffic backup. It just, it's just too much traffic. That 54 can't handle it, much less more. Thank you, gentlemen. You have a prosperous day.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon. SN Khalil, Development Review Services. I'll send David the traffic report to you actually. Stacy is sending it right now.
I'd like the whole Planning Commission to have it.
Yeah, you will have it in the next couple of minutes. But anyway, the study was done for 178 townhomes. The AM trip generation for the project overall and the PM, I'm keeping the numbers for it. They generated a total of 87 trips in the AM peak and 103 in the PM peak. They are, their traffic distribution shows some 10% traffic going down Venezia Drive, if you can see Venezia. 90% goes down to the intersection at 54, and then at 54 is basically 40%, 35%, and 10% heading south, 15%.
That's Livingston?
That's Livingston, right. So staff had reviewed their project traffic distribution, agreed with it. They're using a build-out of year 2030, so the traffic that they assumed, the future year traffic that they assumed, they took the existing traffic, and then they applied a growth factor of 2% to year 2030, came up with the build-out volumes, added the project traffic, and did the intersection analysis. The analysis results, just give me one second. The intersection at 54 on Livingston Avenue from State Road 54 to the project entrance, these are link volumes. It's a VC of .31. It's very low, so there's no capacity shown that northern segment of Livingston. 54 from Collier to Livingston, it is a 1.33 Vover C, so it is, you know, failing basically. It's above E. And the section on 54 from Livingston going east to Oak Grove, the standard is D. It's also at a Vover C of 1.32, volume to capacity. So it's not doing really well. But that is the case in existing, and that is the case in the future build-out. It's the background traffic that is, and the existing traffic that is causing the failure. Project traffic is contributing .01% to what is there right now or will be there in the future. So their percentage, their 178 townhomes, it's .1% significance consumption of the capacity at the intersection.
Is there any kind of analysis at the intersection of Livingston and 54? The concern, is there any kind of analysis of how the intersection operates at Livingston and 54?
Yes. I'll ask my colleague who actually reviewed the traffic study, Ben. You can join me for a second. I see Livingston Avenue in project access. 54 at Livingston, yes. It was analyzed in the traffic study. The intersection is currently signalled, and the results show that it has insignificant impact to the VC ratio with the project traffic added to the background traffic. The report that you will receive-
What's the level of service of the intersection?
Yeah. The eastbound movement, the 2030 background traffic with the project added to it, your eastbound movement is a VC of eastbound, what is that? Eastbound left is at .3, .83. Your, the through is 1.15, so your through volumes that are heading eastbound are failing, above 1.0. And your rights are not an issue. It's .12. And when you look at the westbound direction, the westbound left is at like .85. The through is 1.2 again, so heavy through volumes. And the westbound left is a non-issue. It's .04. When you look at northbound, if you're heading north on Livingston, you pass 54, go through the intersection, your northbound left is failing. It's 1.04, just above 1. Your northbound through is .46. There's hardly much traffic.
Is there like a diagram in there of that?
No, there's a table here that you'll get that shows you the Vover C by movement. Page 14. And the southbound direction is, there is no failure identified. So the major failures are happening eastbound through and westbound through traffic, which is heavy.
And is there any accident history in there?
No, they did not evaluate accidents. I don't know, the applicants engineer is here? No, they did not.
Okay.
Page 14. Go to Table 3. Scroll down. There'll be like a table. Is it Table 3?
It's Table 2.
Table 3, just, just turn it, pivot it 90 degrees right.
So I'll wait till you're done answering that question. I have another question about the traffic.
I don't know if y'all can see anywhere. It's on our screen.
Ma'am, you can't speak from the audience. I don't know if you, your question was answered, was it?
It was answered.
Can I ask you my question?
Sure.
So thank you for sending the traffic analysis. This is helpful. In the conclusion section, it mentions that to deal with the failures on the link, it says that there's improvements in the Cost Affordable Plan and Needs Plan that would, that will improve the level of service along 54. What are those improvements?
Do you want to speak to that, Steve? He's referring to the State Road 54, 56 study that was done. There's improvements identified at Collier and 54 intersection and interchange in the cost, in the Needs Plan, I believe. And improvements at 54 and 41 are identified as well.
I'm aware of what's being planned at 54 and 41, but is the suggestion that that's going to improve the level of service at Livingston? I'm not, I'm not sure if I understand what-
It will improve your congestion that you experience and the delays that you experience because in the peak hours, 54 and Collier fails, basically, eastbound and westbound. PM peak, the westbound direction is backed up-
Question is, if hypothetically they built an overpass at Collier, will that improve the level of service at Livingston?
In my opinion, yes, it will. Because your failing volume, the, the, the volume is failing because a three-lane or six-lane capacity is exceeded by the amount of traffic. And the choke points for any through traffic is always a signal. Whenever traffic comes to a stop, it is impacting the through output of that intersection. And, and you need it to allow the cross streets to operate, or else they'll never be able to get any gaps to get out. So if, if 54 is going over Collier Parkway, that ripple effect that happens going towards 75 when traffic backs up in the evening, you won't have that back, backup or not as significant of a backup.
You're saying the congestion at Livingston is due to the backup at, at 41?
At, at Collier Parkway, definitely. Now, if we ever-
And there's, and there's a flyover at Collier in the Cost Affordable Plan?
I believe so, yes. That's, I think that's- Needs Plan, sorry. Cost Needs, yeah.
Well, as you know, I've expressed concerns about you using the Needs Plan for purposes of traffic studies because it's, the Needs Plan is basically pie in the sky. It means we can't afford it.
Right.
So the only thing that's realistic in the LRTP is if it's in the Cost Affordable Plan.
It is in the Cost Affordable, sorry.
So there's a flyover at Collier in the Cost Affordable Plan?
It's, it's shown in the Mobility 2045 map.
And so it's in the Cost Affordable Plan, we have a flyover at Collier. I'm just, that's what I'm asking. Is that the improvement that's going to really?
Yeah, it says a new-
Mr. Andrew, maybe you could explain what you meant when you said that.
It talks about, it highlights the intersection as a new improved interchange.
At Collier? At Collier. Okay. And that's in the cost affordable plan?
Yep, that's the page form.
Okay.
So Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Florida Tampa 33607. So yes, in the cost affordable, and this is the 2045 cost affordable plan at the time we did the analysis, that there was an interchange in there with Collier. In addition to that, there are identified, and we, I was actually on the committee for the 54 analysis that went from US 19 all the way east of 581. And there's, there is improvement that, we never came to a final absolute conclusion as to what that is, but there would be parallel capacity on 54. And that is also identified in the cost affordable plan as an improvement to help the capacity and operation of 54. Those are things like, whether it be frontage roads, whether it would be elevated roads, whether it be, you know, the interchanges. But there are multitude of different options that we explored at that point in time to help that overall segment of 54.
What? Well, so what I'm worried of is the widening, the potential widening of county line. For this segment of 54, what parallel road are you talking about?
Well, it would be, and that's what we're saying. There wasn't a final determination as to what that additional operational capacity improvements would be. One of the things that we explored was the ability to do an elevated roadway, or other options like that that may be where we would put in frontage roads, other options.
In the cost affordable plan.
It is in there, what it says in there. And you look at the cost affordable plan, it's highlighted for that entire segment of 54. And it says, capacity operational improvements from US 19 to east of 581. So it wasn't identified exactly what those would be because we never came to a final conclusion as to what those improvements. But there is the understanding that there would be some improvements during that timeframe that would help the overall operation of 54. So that's why we say in the conclusion that there is, there is something identified. It's just not what that specific improvement is. That's why we couldn't identify exactly what that is. But it is identified as a need in the cost.
But the improvement at Collier, is I specifically identified?
The interchange with 41 and Collier are specifically identified in, on the plan.
And in your opinion, will the improvements to Collier alleviate the congestion that was identified at Livingston?
Well, there are a number of things that would help that. One is that, the other is Division Road, as Livingston potentially goes north and ties into Collier as a parallel facility ultimately. You know, so there are things like that that would help the overall operation of the intersection.
Just a quick question. Steve, I'm not trying to insinuate, just don't understand. I'm looking at the northbound movement, and it has a V to C of 106 with the 20, or 1.06 with the 2030 background traffic. And then when I add the project traffic, it goes down to 1.04. How does it go down?
The program that we use, which is actually the one that the county and DOT require that we use, in some instances, because of the reallocation of traffic, it will actually reduce, even though we don't change the timing, don't change anything else, it will actually sometimes reduce that VC ratio just based on the volume and reallocation in the program itself. But it is a, it's unfortunate, it's a program we have to use, but that's, that's what happened. It does sometimes get, actually give you a little bit lower VC ratio for specific movements within the intersection, even though we don't change any of the parameters. And believe me, we've, I've actually gone to the, the people that produce the program to ask them those questions, and I never can get a true straight answer. But that's, but it overall gives you the general, what the, what the operation of the intersection is. But it will give you some, because when you change the traffic in there...
You take this for what, what you will.
Yeah.
But your last name's P.E., just like mine, and the board rules are pretty clear that you're responsible for the output of your software. You can't blame it on the software writer.
No, but what I can say is that, what I'm telling you is that, that's why it will give you a slight, a slightly different answer, is because of the reallocation of the time within that intersection for those movements. It will, it will, even though you increase traffic in that one movement, it will slightly decrease the VC ratio.
Okay.
So Steve, while you're up here, do you want to explain why the methodology says the zoning's to MF1?
Sure. So what happened was, if you know with, when you do Euclidean zonings, to file the zoning, we have to have the traffic study approved. So when they first started this process, they were going to zone the property MF1. So we did the methodology and submitted the analysis based on MF1. After they met with staff, staff asked them to know, can you make it an MPUD? But at that point, we'd already had the methodology approved, already had submitted the analysis. So that's why it was MF1, because that was the original intent. But to submit, we have to have the analysis approved. So that's why there's that discrepancy. The numbers are the same, we just ended up, staff asked them to go to an MPUD.
So you're saying the entitlements...
Are the same.
Did not change?
Did not change. The only thing was just what we called it, because of the timing of when that analysis has to be submitted.
And I'm assuming this graphic that shows some distribution to Vinella Drive is really made...
That's a typo, yes.
It's Vinizia or whatever?
Yes, correct, yes.
Just by way of commentary, I think if, in the future, if you guys are going to put in a traffic study that there's future improvements that are going to alleviate congestion, you need to identify what they are, or attach the pages from the cost affordable plan or do something.
It is actually, the cost affordable plan is actually in the appendix. We have the CIP, the cost affordable plan, and the needs plan are all in the appendix of the report, and identifies.
Oh, you did. Apologize. Sorry, I just got it.
Okay.
So I had no chance to look at this previously.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey Steve, while you're up here, since you mentioned it, Livingston punching north to Collier, is there, I know that's Vision, but is there any timing on that that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Because that would substantially alleviate a lot of movements through that area. I drive that area extensively, and that, that intersection at Collier and 54 is really bad.
Sure. And that's why it is identified as an interchange in the future.
Yeah, I would agree that the improvements down to 41 and 54 would help that to a degree, and I know that's high priority, but I'm not sure how much it helps it in the end, because I think the real issue is going east, towards the outlet center.
Do we know anything about the nature of the, the accidents at the intersection? The lady testified that there were 400 and something accidents at that intersection, and only 500 down at the interchange as compared to this.
I thought she had mentioned a segment of roadway, not specific intersection, but maybe I'm incorrect. We can certainly actually pull them up pretty quickly here.
I guess that's, yes, I'd like to know more about what's the, what's the typical cause, or is there a typical cause? I mean, is this a...
Sure.
Is this a problem that's a function of this poor intersection, or is there some repeating pattern that we see here? I want to make sure that if we approve something here, that we're not going to aggravate that.
Sure. No, that's our problem. Actually, with, your staff has the ability to pull that up and look at it pretty quickly to see what, what those accidents were at that intersection.
Which staff is that? Allison?
So, we were just looking at earlier, so he has the ability to look at that. So we can, we can certainly look at that...
Okay.
While we're going through this.
So Steve, I did look at what you attached.
Yeah.
And it's from the 2045 LRTP. We now have a 2050 LRTP, so...
No, and I agree. And that's why I had said in my, in my comments that we used the 2045, because that's what was in effect at the time we did the analysis.
Okay, well, now that we have an adopted 2050, have these improvements changed?
That, I honestly, I'd have to look, I have not looked at that.
Okay, well, should we be using the plan that's in effect when we approve the rezoning? I mean, I, I mean, I'd like to know if the 2050 plan is any different for these projected improvements that we're talking about for Collier. Could anybody tell me?
We can certainly look at that and see.
Mr. Moody, I can get the, the traffic accident data, but I have to request it from Traffic Operations. They can release that. They gave me some traffic data today for Shady Hills accident reports. I have to put in a request. I do not have direct access to them.
Okay, I understand. Okay.
All right, Gianna.
The next individual we have signed up for public comment is a Mr. Wyatt Whitson.
Hello, my name is Wyatt Whitson. I live on 4121 Jerry Lane.
Mr. Whitson, could we just speak a little louder, because I think people will have trouble hearing you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, adding 300 plus cars to our road will disrupt our way of life. For generations, we've ridden horses here. My grandmother, my mother, my, my mother, and now me. Our local school's track team trains here because it's safe and quiet. If this road becomes overrun with traffic, it won't just be inconvenient, it will, it will be dangerous. We will lose the ability to ride, to run, and to feel safe in our own community. Please don't take this way from me.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You next.
The next individual we have signed up is a Ms. Linda Brown.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Brown. My address is 23450 Boulder Crest Place, Land O' Lakes, Florida, 34639. And I feel that there's no real consideration has been given to the community or the families who live there. Many of, for generations, some of us have called this area home for over 55 years. This is not just a development site. It is a living, breathing community with deep cultural roots, shared history, and a way of life worth protecting. When Collier Parkway was built, it introduced severe flooding. I remember wading through waist-deep water, in our own driveway, passing snakes, fish, and even alligators, just to reach our cars and have to change clothes before going to work or school. Then Terabella was built, and flooding happened again. Swift Mud had stated that Terabella was a direct contributor to some of our flooding. Now we're facing another large-scale development, 178 townhomes with only one entrance and exit point. That's hundreds of additional vehicles entering and exiting daily. A single-access road creating traffic congestion and raising serious safety concerns, especially during emergencies, flooding, and evacuations. The natural wetlands that help recharge our aquifer and manage stormwater are being destroyed. The retention ponds being installed as a replacement is not offering the same environmental benefits. They still, they fill with silt and lose their efficiency quickly. And when this project is finished, the developers will leave, just like they did at Terabella. But we, the residents, will be left to deal with the long-term consequences. Increased flooding, environmental degradation, unsafe traffic patterns, and the loss of rural cultural that defines this community. We are not against growth, but we are against reckless, short-sighted development that ignores local voices, just, disrupts ecosystems, and prioritizes profit over people. Responsible development must be rooted in sustainability, transparency, and respect for the families and the land that are already here.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Just clarification. Where do you live, ma'am, in relation to the development?
I grew up on 20 Mile Level Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I have pictures too. That's next to the driveway where the water had receded. That's my cousin's house. And there's water all the way up to his home. That's the driveway.
When are these photos?
Pardon me?
When are these photos taken?
When? At different times throughout the years.
Okay.
They're not all the same time. This, that's my cousin's home. And that's actually taken from, there's a pond between my mother's home and my cousin's home, and the pond goes from his house, or way up past his house, to my mother's house. That's outside the door. That's another home that's on 20 Mile Level Road. Another one. That's the driveway. That's the driveway.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next individual we have signed up is a Ms. Mary Bartlett.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Bartlett. I live at 3854 Satius Place in Land O' Lakes, Florida, 34639.
Okay, thank you.
We moved to this area 26 years ago. And the development since then has caused so much, and I'm going to say it again, traffic. It used to be, we would only get onto Collier Parkway from Weeks, and then of course, the development went through to Bell Lake Road. From my house, it's only 2.3 miles from my house to Collier and 54. It takes me 18 to 20 minutes because of the backup is so bad. I also go to a church, which is west of 20 Mile Road. It's called Lake Myrtle. It used to be a Baptist church, now it's just Lake Myrtle Church. And when I try to get into there, because there is a, where you can turn into the church, I cannot get through. The backup from Collier Parkway all the way down past, almost past the mall, is so bad, I cannot get into the church. I have to go down to Livingston and try to make a U-turn to actually get into the church. And so for me, 400 extra cars, let's just say hypothetically, two cars, three cars per, is just going to make it a lot worse. And the traffic is getting so bad, it's dangerous. And when I do try to cross into the church, and people are trying to stop because there's three lanes of 54, someone's going to get killed. So that's why you either have to go down and make a U-turn, or risk your life. The other thing that people have not mentioned, I'm an environmentalist. I moved out here because of the deers, the gopher turtles, and all the beautiful life that we have. Nobody is considering what's taking 46 to 50 acres. What are we going to do with those creatures? What are we going to do for the deers? There are now three dead deers, right now, on Collier Parkway. And I know people want to make money, but at what cost? And so for me, I personally think between the traffic, and like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm an environmentalist, I believe that we're in dominion over God's world. And so for me, money over creation, over land, is ridiculous. And I love where I'm living, but it's actually dangerous for me to try to get onto 54 anymore. It really is. And I think this project should be denied, in my opinion. And I, my biggest question is, and this is, this is a question I have. In the last five years, how many projects by the commissioners have been denied because of people like us who are against it? Thank you.
Thank you. Where do you live?
I live on 3854 Satius Place. If you take Collier all the way down, it used to, you couldn't go down to Bell Lake Road, but you go down to Weeks and follow it all the way around. I live in a teeny little side street called Satius. It's spelled S like in Sam, E.I.X.A.S. place. And I live on a cul-de-sac. And when I built my house, we had to have an engineer come in and do a drainage plan so that we would not flood the people alongside of us. Because it does... Because it does flood. You should see the cul-de-sac when it rains. It's ridiculous. And I just think projects like this will make that worse.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Last individual we have signed up for in-person comment is a Mr. George Cavalier.
Cavaloo.
Sorry.
Mr. Cavaloo, could you have your full name and your address?
My name is George Cavaloo. I live at 23651 Harmony Lane. Used to be 2818 20 Mile Level Road, but Pasco decided to be courteous and change it for us. Got to move without actually moving. I was here to talk about the traffic study that was done. My information was that it was done in October of 2023. It was done between the hours of 4:00 and 6:00. Now I just got new information that it was done more and the ones that actually ordered the traffic study don't seem to fully comprehend what was there. I would ask for a continuance just so we could study that a little further. Because now I'm talking of something that wasn't actually happening. But can you pull up the aerial of that area? What I'm, my concern is, the traffic study, I assume that they did was that it was only on Livingston. It was, I assume, a weekday that school was in, and so there were no holidays, federal holidays, so it would be normal traffic. But it was only done on Livingston. It was done between the hours of 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. If you look at the map, go up a little bit there. Terabella has 250 homes, assuming there's two, two cars per home, but let's say only 50%, uh, 200 cars, 200 people are going to go to work. If they work east of Terabella, they can go westbound on 54th. They can go right into Terabella, right on the main entrance. If they're go, if they work west of Terabella, they'll have to come down 54 eastbound. They have an entrance there, right into the main. If you're coming from the south, if you're coming up Livingston itself at the light, you can go straight into where the, into Livingston north, and then make the turn onto Venetia Drive and go in that way. Or you can make a right-hand turn right on red. They'll get through quicker and then go through the opening in the median. The study wouldn't have, if it was the study that I was informed it was, didn't take into account the morning hours. Terabella, if you want to go west, you can come out of the main entrance and just shoot straight down to Collier and go south into Tampa, or north or wherever. However, if you want to go east, you want to go towards the interstate, you have two choices. You can go across three lanes of traffic, which between the hours of 7:00 to 9:00 is pretty packed. In fact, I've seen it there where it's gone from the light at Collier up almost to Terabella, which is a mile. On the right-hand lane, you've got to shoot all the way across into the left turn lane. Then you have to wait for that light. That light is a longer light than the one that goes onto Livingston eastbound. So now you have, Terabella can come through to go, to go eastbound on 54. They'll come through on Livingston, which those cars would not have been counted if the study was done between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. It would not have been counted in the morning when people are actually leaving. Disregarding even the ALF, because those people aren't working in the apartments. If you put this development and you're adding another 200 cars at a minimum to the traffic that's there. I, I think their study is bogus, in my own opinion. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I would like a continuance, at least until we could study their traffic report or request a new one that is more current and done with the left turn lane, the left turn lane onto Livingston on 54, Livingston itself, and then the lanes on Livingston on the south side of 54, and also 20 Mile Level, so we can account for those. Otherwise, that study is useless. And you can see already how impacted it is at over 100%, you know, 1.04 and the other numbers that were there, you know, that's really high traffic. And that's because pretty much Pasco County's allowed, you know, unsustainable development so far. And now you're just going to add to it if you approve this. Truthfully, wouldn't mind if you approved a three houses per acre. That wouldn't be as bad. Wouldn't help us, but it wouldn't be as bad. And, you know, it would be a nice transition from an AR-1 to the 3. It's a better transition than just six houses per acre and high-density housing. The meeting that we had with the developer and the, the attorney and the civil engineers, all they pretty much did was confirm that we're not just getting the short end of the stick. We're about getting no end of the stick in this case because it benefits us, it actually hurts us. There's no benefit to the residents at 20 Mile Level, Terabella, or Huntington Ridge. It affects all of us. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Uh, where do you live there, in that area?
Well, I'm on, I, it used to be 2818 20 Mile Level Road, which 20 Mile Level Road at certain times, uh, those people in the Third World and Native Republics laugh at us because it's so bad. Because they can't even, you can find money for a lot of things, but they can't pay that 3/4 of a mile. Or half, or mile, you know. I mean, I, I have a classic car. I can't even take it down half the time because it'll just rattle the hell out of it. And it's hard to find the parts for a 1970 Bonneville convertible.
Okay.
I almost died to get that car sold. That was my, uh, one gift to myself after I got out of the hospital. That'll be the second time.
I hope you enjoyed that.
I, it's hard too because, you know, all that lime dust, as soon as I get onto, go down the road, I mean, the car's full of lime rock, lime dust. You know, you can't, we can't have anything nice over there. My Toyota, that's my daily driver, is disgustingly, the paint is, was gone after two years. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I would request at least another traffic study.
Do we have any other questions for, uh? I don't. Okay, thank you. And now you have people on WebEx?
We do. We have three individuals signed up on WebEx. Uh, the first individual-
Well, I'm going to take a five-minute recess, okay?
Well, you do that.
Well, David.
Okay.
Bleeding like a stuck bean. I slam my hand to get something over there. Yeah. So it makes you feel like a dumbass.
Because they're putting water in the flooding man.
Take that blood thinner, it makes your skin so thin. It don't take much to start bleeding.
I'm glad they had something to stop me.
Yeah, me too. Because it was.
Blood over the gavel.
Right, well, no. Oh, James. We're gonna have to test the gavel.
Pass the gavel just so you don't get blood on it?
Right. Horrible. I've had all the years in the sun down here, and so my skin's like paper. And every time I scratch on a stick or my chicken wire or whatever.
It's a combination green.
Oh, yeah.
They don't really have a person fighting. It's more.
Great.
Or chipping. Yeah, right next to it's, that's where, if they, a little bit further out, they'd be able to put a. We're kind of reconfiguring that area so they could. That's, that's always my comment to them, hopefully they'll take into consideration. That's always a part of my game, my struggle is.
Okay, let's reconvene. All right, I think you should do some people on wine.
The next individual we have to speak for item P six is a Jonathan Hecht.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Hecht. I live at two six one zero Twenty Mile Level Road. And we have a significant flooding problem on Twenty Mile Level Road, as Linda had previously mentioned. I live within that flood zone. So my property is actually within a flood zone. The issue that we have is the flow path where all of this water drains through was created in nineteen fifty by Swift Mudd and Pasco County to alleviate mosquito control. It was never designed for the intended use that it's being used for right now. Terabella, the apartments in Terabella, the assisted living facility, they all use an open basin, which means all of the water rolls off into this flow path. That's an incredible amount of water. The DEP, the FLDEP, Pasco County, and an independent engineering study done by the builder all have indicated that this flow path cannot handle the amount of water that is being presented to it. With that said, in addition of the enclave at Livingston, even though they are creating retention ponds to handle this water, the key word in this is that these retention ponds are designed for normal rain conditions. Whenever we have large rain conditions, we have a massive amount of runoff from all of these properties. And all of this water runs through this drainage path that goes through my property to the Big Cypress Swamp to the north. It can't handle it. We can't handle any more water until this flow path is improved. I'm not saying that buildings shouldn't continue to progress or what have you, but you can't, I'm telling you can't, but you shouldn't approve this knowing that the surrounding properties can't handle the existing amount of water that is currently being introduced to it. With the enclave at Livingston, all of that wetlands, everything from the north of Twenty Mile Level Road runs south on Twenty Mile Level Road, goes into those wetlands, turns around, and then comes back north again through this man-made drainage ditch that was created back in the fifties. Again, this was never designed for the massive amount of drainage that is being presented to it. So until this drainage is improved, you can't continue to send all of this water through my property. They're currently scanning some pictures and some photos and documents. I have copies of the property appraiser site where you can see back in nineteen fifty-four, this drainage site didn't exist. And then they came through and very abruptly cut this drainage ditch simply to drain this area of water to help control mosquitoes. They never thought it was going to be the main drainage path for all of these surrounding communities to be draining water into it. So you can see in like nineteen seventy-five, it exists. But when you look at current day drainage, it's filled in. All this silt and runoff from surrounding properties and all of the limestone from Twenty Mile Level Road, everything that's been carried through, the drainage is no longer even, even allowed, even able to access the amount of water that's coming through currently, let alone removing any amount of wetlands that are actually helping control the amount of water that we currently have. So I'm asking that you deny this request to rezone this property because my property is already showing flood amounts that are greater than the hundred-year floodplain. If you look at the hundred-year floodplain and you look how bad that I flood, not just during Hurricane Milton, not just during Hurricane Debbie or any other hurricanes, under normal situations, when we get just heavy amounts of rain, my property will flood to the point where it's greater than what it shows on the hundred-year floodplain.
Okay, well, we, I think we have four engineers on this board, so I think they can speak to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions right now? Anybody?
Well, you said that these retention ponds are designed for everyday events and not big events?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so the retention ponds, you know, I was speaking with the engineer for the group. They're designed for normal rain conditions.
What do you mean, normal rain conditions?
An afternoon, three, four o'clock rain, rain event that happens, the retention ponds will control a certain amount of water that normally would have been runoff. But when we get these heavy rain events, we've seen the surrounding retention ponds fail. And they will overflow and then go straight into the flow path that runs through my property.
Well, I'm not believing Mr. Couch told you that, the engineer for the project, because he knows what the design criteria is and the Water Management District rules and the county rules make us look at a once-in-a-twenty-five-year event and a once-in-a-hundred-year event, not an afternoon thunderstorm.
Correct.
So they are designed for extreme events is the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah. Okay.
And the rules require that they don't discharge any more water after development than they did before development. And that's enforced both at the county level and the state level.
Okay.
And just so you're aware, their, their site plan contemplates very little of any impacts of the existing wetlands that are on that property. And actually creation of quite a bit of retention on the property.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a state and county requirement that they don't. And I don't need more water runoff on your property than you already have.
Yeah.
They're not required to fix your property, but they're, are required not to hurt your property. And that's, that's where the engineers come in. And that's why it's important that we have engineers on this board because, and by the way, I don't think we even had Swift Mudd in nineteen fifty.
I'm sorry?
I don't think we even existed with Swift Mudd in nineteen fifty. When you mentioned the fact that Swift Mudd came in to the ditch, they weren't even in existence in nineteen fifty.
Oh, okay, I was, I was, Swift Mudd, Swift Mudd along with Pasco County dug that drainage ditch.
Well, you said it was for mosquito control. That's probably the mosquito control district. You might want to check with them and see if it's one of their ditches.
Okay.
If it needs maintenance. I mean, I, I can understand if it's been silted in over the years. In fact, I've been watching the Department of Transportation along US nineteen for the past couple of months start to fix some of their old outfall ditches from the fifties and sixties after realizing during, after the hurricanes, they finally woke up and realized that you can't just build it and forget it. So they're out there doing that now. Might be a good time to talk to mosquito control about that.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been talking with Pasco County about getting the problem corrected. But, you know, the one thing that I will say though is, is every one of these studies that has happened in accordance with Terabella, the assisted living facility, every one of them has said that they are going to control the water so that it is a reduced amount of water heading towards my property. And with every development that has come through, we've seen an increased amount of water, not a reduction in the amount of water.
Well, what I'm telling you is that the requirement is that they, they're not required to fix your problem, but they are required not to make your problem worse.
Yeah.
And the engineers have to sign off on that. So if they, if they didn't know what they were doing, they'd be subject to some kind of penalty. So, I mean, it's, it's a serious event. These, that's why these developers have to spend so much money with, with the development costs. Most people have no idea how much money it costs to, just to even begin development of one of these properties. By the time you go through all the engineers and the attorneys and the land use people and the, I mean, it's a, it's a big investment of time and money. And that's why, that's one of the reasons that we're fortunate to have so many engineers on this board. Because when people speak to us about issues like this, we can speak to them with real knowledge, not just feelings. So we're in, we're in a good position to answer any questions that you have and, and with regard to engineering. And we're happy to do so. And we also are in a position to ask the developer if they've met those criteria. And so I appreciate you coming. I don't know if anybody else has any more questions for you, but I know that waters, water and traffic are always concerns for everybody. But you know what the problem is, is that people still keep coming here. You know, and I, you know, I for one, my, my business has been here for over a hundred years. And I've seen a lot of people come. And, and I used to love it around here when I could. The freedom was unbelievable. But it became a very popular place. And people like you and people in this room want to move here and enjoy what everybody else is enjoying. And I don't blame them. I don't hold it against them for wanting to do that. But it was sure nice when I was a kid and I didn't have any of this kind of stuff to worry about.
Yeah, agreed.
So, you know, it's a, you have to strike a balance between nature and people. And I can't just say, you know, my family came here a hundred and fifty years ago and, and we don't want any of these other people here. We liked it the way it was. We have to strike a balance. We have to be reasonable about our approach. And people have property rights. So again, we're trying to get a balance so that people can continue to live, continue to enjoy, that we don't make yours, if you developed in an area that's, that floods, you know, we, we're not happy about it, but probably you did that, how many years ago? When did you build your place?
My property was built in nineteen seventy-five.
Well, there you go. I mean, you, it probably wasn't as bad back then.
Right, exactly.
You know, but, and I think as Mr. Moody, who is an engineer, has said, a lot of these ditches and these, these pathways that have, were dug for water purposes, drainage purposes have, haven't been maintained and they need to be maintained. We've come across this a number of times. And so these are things that, that we need to talk to the county or whoever's, whoever's responsible for it. Because that's their responsibility. So we have to live here as a community. We can't exclude people. I can't make you get a visa to come to Florida, you know. You know, it, so we were all here. There's always was somebody else here before we were here.
Right.
You know, so we have to find a way to, to live together and try to do the best we can. When nobody wants to make it, make life difficult for anybody else.
Yeah.
So, and that's the basis on which we try to make these decisions. They aren't easy decisions because we know that we all face those problems in our own neighborhoods. So, but we just try to do the best we can. So we appreciate you being here and voicing your concerns. And we'll do our best to hear you and address them as best we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I was looking at the aerials from the property appraiser. And it looks like in nineteen forty-one, there was a big wetland or substantial wetland in that area on Mr. Heck's property as well as to the south and then long about nineteen, early nineteen. And then long about early 1970s, it looked like part of that got filled in.
Mm-hmm.
And then there were ponds created. I don't know what the purpose was, but that ditch was there. That ditch was there back in 1940. There was a wetland there and part of the wetland got filled in. And so that was certainly impacted back then.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Heck?
Would you want to show any of this?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, well, yeah, I mean, go ahead and show the images if you'd like. So you can see the aerial right there. My son has a drone and he took an aerial of the area. And you can see that everything north of Terrellane, including the retention ponds, have failed and flowed northward. That's all of the flooding, where you see Hecht right there. That's where my property is. And so I have a steel building right there, which was inches away from having water enter it.
Oh, he looks like he built on the high ground there.
Yeah. So that's all the water level coming off of. And these are at different points in time. And just more flooding pictures of the property. And this is a DEP letter. You can keep scrolling down. It states that there are, you know, issues with the flooding and that it can't control anything. You can just scroll on through it. No one's going to read that. And the proposed development. So we don't have to go through anymore. This is stuff that's already been presented as well. So I just wanted to...
All right, Mr. Heck, thank you. We appreciate your efforts there and for sharing your information.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, who's next?
We do have a couple of individuals signed up on WebEx. The first individual we have is Ms. Debbie Goodman.
All right, Ms. Goodman. Ms. Goodman, are you with us?
She is. She is. Take a recess. I just lost, I just disconnected WebEx.
They're all disconnected?
WebEx just disconnected.
Instead of taking a recess, since we just took one, can I get an answer to my question about the cost affordable plan? What's in the 2050 plan?
So on the 2050 plan, the interchange is still there. The...
Interchange to Collier.
Collier, correct. At the, it does not show the improvements to 54 at this point, but it does have County Line Road as being four lanes, a parallel road to 54 in that area.
So in your opinion, would the, would it overpass a Collier and the widening of County Line Road address the congestion on 54?
That would certainly help the situation there, yes. And if I...
Yeah, the reason I'm concerned is because I'm looking at the code and it says, "Where there's a failure, the analysis will continue with the inclusion of any cost affordable improvements from the MPO's adopted LRTP." I don't see where your analysis actually analyzed that there's a failure, 54.
Right.
All you did was make this generalized conclusion that there was improvements in the LRTP that would address the failure.
And part of that is because in the LRTP that was in effect at the time we did the analysis, which was a 2045, there weren't specific improvements identified. What those were was the corridor study would be continued to evaluate what that ultimate geometry would be. But that was part of it was whether it's elevated roads, whether it's frontage roads, whether it's parallel facilities. But that was, that was why we said that. That was the purpose in that designation on the cost affordable plan was for those improvements along 54 to help with the capacity of the roadway.
Okay, but we've had an adopted 2050 LRTP for how long now?
Six months.
Six months? That wasn't enough time to update the study to reflect the effect of what's still in the LRTP, which is...
We have not typically, every time a CIP or a, you know, long-range plan gets a change, that we update all the analysis we've done. We can certainly do that, but that is not historically been...
I'm just going by what the code says. The code says you're supposed to use the adopted LRTP.
And we use it, at the time that we submitted the analysis, we used the adopted LRTP.
Can you, again, what was the improvement that's now in the new LRTP?
So what's in the new, I think what I'm hearing, so this staff tells me I'm wrong. What I'm hearing is that the big difference between the 2045 LRTP and the current LRTP is not the improvements. Apparently, they both have Collier Parkway, a new interchange at Collier, and the widening of County Line Road are apparent, both in the cost affordable plan?
Correct.
Both versions?
That's my understanding, yes. That's what we looked at just a minute.
You looked at cost affordable, just to make sure.
Correct.
Because that's also in the code, so it's got to be cost affordable, not needs.
Right.
The big difference is that the 2045 plan also had a general statement that other improvements, which were to be identified as part of some study, might also occur on 54. That statement was removed in 2050. So all that's left is the Collier Parkway interchange, future interchange, and the widening of County Line Road. Those may in fact address congestion on 54. I don't know, and that's why I asked him the question. But normally, the analysis would, the way I read the code, the analysis should have said, "And if those things are in place, it will have some improvement on 54." At least, that's how I read the code. Now, his statement is, he didn't do that because the LRTP at the time he did his study didn't have specific improvements identified. But now, the only improvements that are identified are those two improvements, as far as I can tell.
Right, right. You're right.
Which is the, an interchange at Collier and the widening of County Line Road.
And does your analysis, the current version of the analysis, include the interchange and the widening that was in the 2045?
No, I saw his analysis. It just has a general conclusion that those, that the improvements in the LRTP will address the failure.
Correct, because that was the purpose in the, because we have less than 1% impact on the road, on 54. So the comment or in the analysis is that the improvements that are in the LRTP at the time, cost affordable, would address those capacity deficiencies because that was the purpose in having that designated in the plan. But what the specific improvements, we couldn't run it because those haven't been identified. They are to be identified. So that's why it wasn't specific in there.
But the LRTP has changed.
True.
It no longer has a statement about some to-be-identified improvements. So what is left is an interchange at Collier and the widening of County Line Road. All I want to know is, do we think that that's likely to address the failure on 54? Because it's not in the analysis. If Mr. Henry say anything that will help, it'd be nice if our staff could tell me if they think the same thing. I would argue the code requires that to be analyzed, whether those improvements will help 54 if there's a failure. So it'd be nice to know. I mean, the purpose of these timing and phasing analysis, at least when we originally adopted the code, was it's a party planning tool.
Sure.
We're trying to make sure that if we approve development, that we have a plan to address the deficiencies. And so it may be that those two improvements that are in the LRTP are our plan to address the deficiencies. I just, I don't have anything that says that.
No, and at the time we did the analysis, those improved, we did address it in the code because that improvement, at the time we did the analysis, we used the adopted plan, and that would have addressed the deficiencies.
Right, but it was a, but it was a...
Pardon?
But it was an unknown solution at the time.
I fully understand.
So apparently, we've abandoned that idea of an unknown solution, at least in 2050 plan. So now that we have the only known solutions being an interchange at Collier and the widening of County Line Road, that would just be nice if somebody actually said that that's our plan to address the deficiency that was identified in the study.
When?
It's a 2050 plan, so presumably...
25 years from now.
Correct.
But...
That's the response I expected.
That's an accurate statement. But at least we know we can afford it 25 years from now. This is why I've had some concerns.
Promises, promises.
This is why I've had some concerns with staff relying on the needs plan because the needs plan shows what we need, but it's improvements we can't even afford, even in 25 years, so...
Steve, I was just going to tell you, I'm not worried about a traffic jam solution 25 years from now. I'm worried about 400 accidents today. That's what I want to know about.
And let me address that. So we looked at the intersection. There have been, in five years, 61 accidents at that intersection. 28 of them are rear end, which you would expect at a signalized intersection. So the, it's only been 61 in five years. So it is not 400 or 500 at the intersection. And certainly, glad if you want to bring staff up there and confirm that. But we pulled it up on the analysis that shows and tracks the intersections and the accidents at those intersections.
You're talking about Livingston?
54 and Livingston, correct.
On Livingston or on 54?
At the intersection of 54 and Livingston, there have been 61 accidents in five years.
Okay. That's a big difference in 400.
Correct. And I think she was talking about a segment, at least when I heard it, it was a segment of 54, not the intersection. But we pulled up the specific intersection to look at the last five years of accident data.
All right.
And then I do want to address your one other question on the northbound left, just to explain to you. So again, the program is an iterative program. And so it will, we keep the same signal timing, background plus project. But it will still reallocate what's called effective green time. It will, in the program, actually reassign that. We don't have any control over that. And in this instance, the northbound left went from 19.3 seconds of effective green time to 19.6. So background was 19.3, the background plus project's 19.6. That's what creates the slightly decrease in the delay in the future volumes. And part of it is it reassigns it based on demand. So we had more traffic in the through movement. So it will reassign some of that effective green time. So that's why you'll get a slightly different answer.
No, I mean, I would like staff, somebody from staff, to get up and tell me whether they agree that these improvements in the LRTP are likely to address the failure in the traffic study. I don't know whoever's, whoever reviewed the study or whoever's willing to stand up for it.
Well, it hasn't been evaluated in his traffic study, whether four-laning County Line Road is going to alleviate or not the issues on 54. But it is a reasonable, you know, estimate that the congestion and delays along 54 would experience a reduction when you have a parallel facility that is operating at an acceptable level of service. People would transfer over to a road that they, you know, do not experience congestion. That's how traffic generally works. So in my opinion, yes, it would help, but it has to be evaluated if you need an exact answer whether it drops from a level of service.
Well, I guess I'll ask you, Eson. I mean, I'm looking at the code. It says, "Where there's a failure, the analysis will continue with the inclusion of any cost affordable improvements from the MPO's adopted LRTP." I don't see that analysis anywhere in this. So how did we approve the analysis if it doesn't have that in it?
I can't answer that. I, and to answer your other question that, you know, if the code changed or the LRTP changed, we have like probably 60-plus MPUD projects that have come in in 2024 that had their traffic studies done and approved. Are you saying that we need to go back and redo all of those MPUD traffic studies? Because the LRTP just got adopted.
But the improvements, okay, if you put aside the to-be-determined improvements, which we don't know what they were, and you only go by what the Collier Parkway overpass and the widening of County Line Road, those were in the 2045 LRTP. There's not even an analysis as whether this road will still fail with those improvements, which are specifically identified in the 2045 LRTP. Forget about 2050.
Okay, so you're saying that since there is failure along 54, along 52, any of these developments that we have reviewed and approved and the planning commission has approved and the board has approved, that we should be including wherever there's a failure, if there's an improvement...
I'm going by what the code says. The code says, "If there's a failure, the analysis will continue with the inclusion of any cost affordable improvements from the MPO's adopted LRTP."
We have not been doing that.
That seems to be a problem if we're not following the code.
So how have we addressed failures in traffic plans we've seen or studies?
Say that again?
So how have we addressed failures we've seen in traffic studies that have been submitted?
I mean, I want to be clear. A lot of MPDs don't have failures. Okay, so let's be clear. I think he may be overblowing when he's saying we've approved all these traffic studies. I would say that probably 80% of the traffic studies we get don't identify a failure. Okay, so that he may be overstating things by saying we approved all these traffic, so...
54.
Okay, but all I'm saying is if there is a failure identified, which there clearly was here, the code says we're supposed to look at, first you look at what's in the CIP.
Mm-hmm.
Then it says, "If there's still a failure, you look at what's in the cost affordable LRTP." Are we just not doing that?
We did not do that.
I think it's a problem. I mean, you're not following the code. I mean, that was the whole purpose of these analyses, was to see, okay, if we have a failure, do we have something planned to address the failure, either in the CIP or in the cost affordable LRTP? What I'm hearing is that we might, it might, Collier might, County Line Road might, but I, you know... I mean, if you're not going to do that, I don't know why we still have it in the code. But I guess it is what it is. We can move on to whatever next question, or if we've maybe got these people on. We do.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Thank you.
The next individual was Ms. Debbie Goodman.
Yes, I, hear me?
Yes. Ms. Goodman, have you been sworn?
Yes, I've been sworn. My name is Debbie Goodman. At 240 20-mile level. So I want a little bit and give you some information. My very first speaker that up there, she talked about the accidents. The incidents were 415 between the year of 2022. There have been 200 at the of Livingston and 54. This morning, the one-year-old killed at the intersection of 54 and Collier Parkway due to the traffic. Just wanted to, I just wanted to go back to that. But, you know, I know the other guy said he did a five-year, but I just wanted to show you what our dates were. We would like to express our concerns regarding the ongoing overdevelopment of Pasco County, specifically in Land and Lakes. The charm of Land and Lakes agriculture, rural character, wildlife, and community-based activities like 4H and FFA. However, every day, new development and the development of the varied qualities that make this area special. Farmland, as myself, I own a divorced farm. I implore you to take a step and assess the lasting damage being done.
Excuse me, Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman, can you hear me? You're breaking up terribly. I can only hear about every third or fourth word. So we need to either... third or fourth word. So, we need to either improve it or communication or move on to the-
Okay, well, how about this? Let's go ahead and go on. I think my fellow people in the audience have concerns. I'm just asking you, and I think-
Okay, Ms. Goodman, thank you for making the attempt. Do we have anybody else online that we can actually hear?
We do. The next individual we have signed up is Rebecca Yingling.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we do. Ms. Yingling, have you been sworn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Your address, please?
My address is protected, but I live in the Terabella subdivision.
Okay. Is that sufficient?
That's sufficient, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here to comment. We moved over here from the west side of the county in 2013, and I want to oppose the rezoning of this proposed development. I know many people from 20 Mile have commented about the traffic, and I do want to add into that. I think, I know because I drive this every day, I have two teenagers, one is driving, one will soon be driving. I think the big thing is missing in this traffic study, and I do believe the developer is maybe, I don't understand their traffic study because I live with this every day. From 4 p.m. to 6 p.m., State Road 54 in between, we call your Parkway the parking lot. For me to go a few miles up the road, it could take me 20 minutes. Now, at the light at Livingston, it is the only way people will be able to go eastbound onto State Road 54. Unless they're going to pull out on 54 at the main entrance to Terabella, which nobody's going to do that because you have to jump over three lanes of traffic, which is impossible. In more traffic, you're probably looking at 400 cars on a two-lane road with one turn signal. And I'll just give an example. Yesterday, I was taking my son to something, the light was backed up, the left-hand turn signal to go eastbound on 54 from Livingston was backed up, and there was probably eight or nine cars, it's one lane, to turn left, and we missed the light. We were set back in cars. So, the light turned green again, and people sleep, people don't pay attention, people were honking their horns. The person then just decided to wait it out, wait till the light turned yellow, and then ride for the rest of us. So, this happens a few times a week, so I sat through a light three times, and it took me 15 minutes to turn left onto State Road 54. This is in addition, this was during the 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. It shouldn't take me 40 minutes to go two miles up the road. My son said maybe I should just start riding my bike. The developer, my understanding from listening during this conversation was, they're saying it's already bad, so we're just going to add more to it. I don't think that's a viable solution. When we first moved out here in 2013, traffic wasn't bad at all. That was before the apartments. And we need to understand, I think the other gentleman accurately brought up about the traffic during the morning time. We have the Florida Medical Clinic, which we have, that people are coming in and out of. We have people from the apartments leaving. We have Austin Terabella leaving. You have the retirement center, and then you have, you're going to have people from that new development all leaving and coming in. It's, I don't, it's going to devalue properties, it's going to be more accidents. I am petrified with my kids driving because people don't pay, we have no traffic control out here. There's none, literally. It's the wild, wild west. Everybody drives how they want. I was in an accident at Livingston and 54, and this was back in December, and for the FHP wait time was three and a half hours. Three and a half hours, just for a response. My taxes keep going up, but yet my services go down. I also have a friend who had to call 911 for an emergency due to the traffic backups there. The delay time was extended. I would, one more thing, we did the diverting diamond at 54 in 75. We have daily accidents at 54 and 75. That diverts all that traffic over to 54 towards us. So, we work traffic, every afternoon, there's an accident. I guarantee you it's all over the little Facebook pages. So, this gives us more traffic. And, I mean, I'm just, I would really like if we could just keep the zone the way it is. I understand it was supposed to be a football field for the Academy of the Lakes, which I don't think would have impacted the neighboring communities much, but to add this on for somebody in and out several times a day and the rest of the neighbors in my community, the neighbors in 20 Mile, this is, I don't want to live over here if it's going to take you 30 minutes to go two miles up the road. I would just appreciate if we could, 24, 25, 2050, it's not going to help anybody. We need relief now, and maybe after we get the infrastructure set up, they can look at doing something and putting something like that back there. But Livingston, one turn lane, one turn lane for how many properties to turn eastbound on 54. It's not working now, and it's not going to work. It's just delaying everybody's day and more accidents. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, anybody else on WebEx?
The last individual that we have signed up to speak on WebEx is a Mr. Mike. There was no last name provided.
Mr. Mike, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I need to have your full name and address, please.
Sure, it's Michael Cook, 3804 Hillview Court.
Can you spell the last name for the clerk?
Cook, COOK.
Thank you. All right.
Sure. So, I'm here to oppose the 20-mile level development. I've added myself to this fight because our town is overwhelmed. Development has clogged our roads and strained services. As many of us spoke already, we've sat through four or five different cycles of traffic lights, waiting 15 to up to 30 minutes, going and coming to work, morning and afternoon. More development will just make it worse. You guys are all, a bunch of you guys are engineers up there, you know, filling wetlands. This project is maybe a little reckless. Wetlands, soon they filter water, bad floods, wild invites. Destroying and increasing flood risk harms biodiversity and releases stored carbon, worsening climate change. The Tampa Premium Outlets, development showed wetlands, and while specific impacts are unclear, the region's history shows wetland loss leads to flooding and environmental harm. We can't repeat these mistakes. The Tampa Premium Outlets built in 2015 brought retail but ignored long-term costs. Wetland destruction there and elsewhere has reduced natural flood protection, leaving neighborhoods vulnerable. I live in Lake Padgett Estates, and we actually flooded during the storms last year and lost a couple of homes because of the wetlands, because of the wetland destruction, I should say.
So, while we're waiting, can I ask the county engineer a question?
Sure, absolutely, David.
Nick, sorry to put you on the spot, but I have a question. So, part of the reason that-
Prolactive.
Oh, sorry, I guess-
And it's, it's god-awful getting in that traffic.
I guess he never stopped talking.
Every single day, going and coming. Hello?
Yes, sir.
I can hear somebody talking open while I'm speaking. Is there something-
We lost you for a minute, that's why.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure where I ended or where I began. I know my three minutes is nearly up, but, you know, I've lived in Land and Lakes for nearly 20 years. I love where I live, but it just feels like I'm being squeezed out. All the documentation isn't submitted. There's some voids in the documentation and paperwork that was submitted today. You receiving the traffic study during the meeting is sort of unacceptable. That needs to be studied and analyzed properly, rather than let's make a decision and move forward. So, at the very least, postponement would be necessary. I'm completely opposed to the entire idea because it's affecting the quality of our life. Want people to keep coming here? Well, let's build it properly and build it, as was mentioned earlier, balanced. I think we're out of balance right now, being that there's already a traffic issue that's present, and we're talking about fixing the traffic issue 10, 15, 20 years from now. Let's fix it now and then talk about developing the land that's so important to us. You guys do a great job. I'm not here to badger anybody. I'm not here to dismantle what you guys do. I appreciate what you're doing. It's tough to be in public service, but thank you for your time. Thanks for the few minutes that I have here, and, you know, my family and many families will appreciate at least the delay of this project. And thank you so much. Have a great day.
All right, thank you for your call in. Thank you for your patience.
Can I ask Nick my question before you do rebuttal?
Yes.
We have a suggestion.
Okay.
Obviously, there's concerns about our paperwork. I don't bring anything to you and ask you to vote on something when there's concerns about my paperwork. So, we can do this a couple of different ways. We're going to ultimately ask for a continuance, so we can work on this paperwork. But we do have drainage concerns, things other than traffic that we could discuss and rebut and talk about, or we can just continue it and, you know, continue this discussion for another day. But we don't want to ask you to have to vote when you have concerns about the paperwork. So, wanted to jump in there and let you know ultimately we're going to request a continuance, but how we want to go from here.
Yeah, I have no objection to a continuance. The question I have for Nick is more general about the Collier Parkway overpass and what needs to happen to get that to a stage where it's at least close to where the 54, 41 interchange is, which I realize is beyond your client's control, but I, maybe something he can ask you to about between now and the next meeting. That's why I was asking.
I think that would, I think we can have those discussions and have some better information for you.
Yeah, well, let me just ask you this. Would you rather do that now? I know you, you and your team have gone through a lot to get to this point. So, would you rather go through that partial portion of it now or do it all later?
Yeah, the question is, do you want to talk something about, you know, there's obviously questions about island property partners. There's just, you know, there's different things in here. We had Hunter's Ridge, what's the setback? So, maybe if we can answer some of those questions, to get those off, you know, we've answered those questions, at least, we've answered those, so you don't have to hear it again, and then we have, and then we answer them. So, I think it makes sense to answer some of these questions. Ultimately, we're going to continue it because we want to continue the conversation about traffic.
Okay.
But I think maybe it makes sense to try to-
Makes sense.
Some of these questions answered that I've been, we've been taking notes on. So, if I may-
You may.
Start, try to do that process.
And I was going to say I can address the school question as well.
Okay, very good.
Why don't we have Mr. Williams do that first? Because he is the planning commission member.
Mr. Chris Williams, he's with the school board.
Right, I mean, if he wants to do the school part, and then I'll-
Sure. So, the question was raised about school impacts. So, Lake Myrtle Elementary currently at 73% of capacity, so no issues there with capacity. The impact analysis that was provided did not take into account the opening of the new Skybrook K8, which will open this coming year. And so, Skybrook is going to provide significant relief to Charles Roushi Middle School. And so, we're projecting Roushi Middle to be at 87% next year, and then actually probably even lower the next couple of years because Skybrook K8 won't open with an eighth grade, and it'll take a few years for that to fill up. Sun Lake High is currently at 107% and projected to be at 105% next year. The new Angeline school that we opened a couple of years ago has had impact on Roushi Middle as well as Sun Lake High. We expect it to continue to have some impact on that school. Certainly, growth is going on in Sun Lake's boundary, but it has tempered off the last couple of years. Most of the growth is really more toward the east. However, there is significant future growth, mostly associated with the future Bexley Ranch North, which really isn't doing a lot yet, but we do have a high school site reserved in Bexley Ranch North that we can build when the time comes. So, we're expecting this project to only have about nine students on the high school side, so we're not overly concerned with the impact of the high school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, island property partners, I have no idea what happened with the paperwork. The owner of the property is Academy of the Lakes, and my client, who wouldn't be the applicant, my client is Stanley Martin Homes. The 20-mile level road, I did notice the agenda, and maybe this can get fixed too, that in the findings, it was talking about Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, Option A, Option B. There was a time when this paperwork said, initially when it came to you and then we continued it so we could have a neighborhood meeting, the paperwork said there was two options regarding 20-mile level road, and actually the condition required us to request a closure of 20-mile level road. We heard the residents talk to the county and said they want 20-mile level road to remain 20-mile level road. We are not, we are proposing to extend Livingston Road extension in order to provide access to this project. We don't intend on using 20-mile level road. We're doing a new road, extension of an existing road, a vision road to access our project. So, that paperwork, surprised David didn't call it out yet, but the paperwork is a little messy on staff's part, on the memo, and I can see where a resident could be confused about, is there still an Option A and Option B? There's not. There is a 20-mile level road that will remain.
Barbara, I also wonder where the part of the confusion is, my computer's shut down, but there may still be a statement in there that you're going to close 20-mile level road within your own property. And so, that may be also leading to the confusion because you clearly are, I think you are going to be closing a portion of 20-mile level road, but it's only within your project.
We're realigning 20-mile level road because Livingston Road and 20-mile on our access all converge.
Existing 20-mile level road is not, at some point, it won't exist within your property.
Correct.
It's going to be realigned to the new road. I'm just wondering if that's causing part of the confusion as well. I don't, I don't know.
But yes, you're right. And we probably could get a better explanation of that in the memo as well, you know, try to clean up some of this so it's clearer, because I don't think, you know, you have to piece together what conditions mean and exhibits mean as opposed to writing what it means. So, but you're right. There will be a realignment of 20-mile level road by this project, and there'll be a segment where 20-mile level road will be routed to Livingston Road Extension, and then it goes back to their dirt road as it goes up to their homes.
But you're saying the 20-mile will still be accessible from State Road 54?
That's correct. That's correct, yes. And we did, at our neighborhood meeting, we did show the residents, we're like, this is how, and showed them how it would be, stop sign here, stop sign there, and so, we can do a better job of, with staff, getting that into a narrative, whether it's my narrative attached to it or staff's narrative in their agenda memo, but we can do a little better job of explaining that, so there's not confusion there. On Huntington Ridge, what is the setback? Our units are setback from their property line 30 feet. So, it's 30 feet off the property line, to answer that question. Jeremy Couch with Tampa Civil is here and knows a lot about drainage and can talk to you all about drainage. I think that's some of the questions that we needed to answer. Obviously, there's traffic, but did you want to hear from Jeremy about some of the drainage?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Chairman?
Jeremy Couch with Tampa Civil, 17937 Hunting Bow Circle, Lutz 33558. So, been working on this project now for about a year and a half. And immediately, we identified that there may be some drainage constraints to the north and that our design needed to be very sensitive to those issues. The first major hurricane we had, or major storm that came through a year and a half ago, we went and documented. Through Milton, we documented. Through Helene, we documented. We flew about a three-hundred acre area with LiDAR on our own. We went out and did survey work on our own to figure out what the issues were, what the challenges were in the area, and what relief could happen. At this time right now, I have an approved ERP from the Water Management District for a masqueraded version of this community. I also have a permit from Pasco County for masquerading that considers our development, our ponds, for this community. During that review...
You have a permit?
I'm permitted right now.
Issued?
Yes, sir. Development approval memo signed. Just have to put up our...
For a property that's not rezoned?
For...yes, sir. It's, to be clear, this is the masquerading for an improved area. It's not approved to build houses or run utilities. But, for the early review...
I understand.
Okay. All right. So, during that review, we got a great call from County Engineer's Office and some of the county stormwater engineers and said, hey, just want you to know that we have been trying to work with some neighbors to solve an issue for eight years. And I said, okay. How can we help? And so, we went out and we did a lot of extensive surveying work on my nickel, because I live in Land O' Lakes and I do care about our community. And we had four meetings to discuss what we could do for our project. I gave information to the county that shows that our project, in the twenty-five-year storm event, reduces our discharge rates by nineteen CFS, which equates to thirty percent. So, in the twenty-five-year event, I'm reducing over retaining by thirty percent. In the hundred-year event, I'm over retaining by ten-point-eight percent. I know that doesn't help somebody who had their home within inches during an act of God storm event, but certainly, this community would do its small part to the bigger problem. In addition to that, we had a neighborhood meeting, and there were a lot of people that showed up. And a lot of people were very concerned about the bigger growth problems we're having, the traffic on 54. But, at the end of that meeting, we were able to spend some very meaningful time with some of the people that were directly affected by the storms on Twenty Mile Level. I think you guys saw on the aerials, you know, the big issue is, is that historically, there was a creek, a natural creek that ran there and goes to Cypress Creek. There was a Cypress swamp. In the nineteen-seventies, when, you know, we didn't have these growth management rules and ERP permits, and people just made land, and they didn't engineer land, they just made land. They filled in swamps, and they made land. And a few of these homeowners live on that old swamp. And it's...and so, there are solutions. And my client has expressed an interest in going above and beyond and helping solve the problem that the county can't solve and is willing to do that. So, I think our community, from a drainage perspective, I know it's hard to explain that to people that are not professional engineers and professional drainage engineers. But, I do want the board to know that this community and our design was very sensitive to their needs and did what we could for our process to have an incremental benefit to their issue. And I can answer any specific questions you want about what we did, how we did it, what the problems are.
Well, there were some issues about a pipe.
Yes, 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 Chairman. There...
I believe you offered to fix that on your own?
Yes, sir. So, the real challenge is, is where this old swamp was, where a lot of these folks... And you saw in the imagery, you're flooded. The downstream, the upstream inverts are eighteen inches lower than a culvert along the way. So, you have a very large wetland system that's impounded, you know, twenty-plus acres, impounded by eighteen inches of water. Lowering that culvert and also increasing the capacity of those culverts by maybe doubling it up would bring about significant improvements. And I spoke with a few of the residents afterwards, and, you know, because this has been a long problem and it's...I might not categorize it, but a slight Hatfields versus McCoy situation. Not sure who's right or wrong, but certainly, they're not, you know, eating dinner together every night. It seemed that everybody on both sides would be interested in us helping them and help their neighbors, because they do realize that the people to the south are at risk and that, you know, there's some improvements that could help them. And my client's willing to step up to the plate and help facilitate that. As long as we have willing participants, we can do it. So, certainly, our project has been shown by permit from two agencies to clearly meet and exceed our requirements. But, even further, we're willing to help more.
And those improvements are north of your property, your project boundary?
The constraints are north. The water really wants to get to Cypress Creek.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you saw in the one video where it's, there's kind of an overland weir in a small area. It's impounded. So...
So, you're talking about improvements in that area?
If these neighbors, you know, should we go forward and get approval to build our community, and these neighbors would allow us onto their property to help do this work, certainly, my client is interested in helping them.
Because I understand that the problem is on private property.
It's on private property.
So, the county can't do anything about it?
The county cannot...
The plan is you're willing to step in and fix the problem.
Yes, sir.
What's downstream of the culvert that needs to be lowered eighteen inches?
Cypress Creek.
Okay.
So, we hit Cypress Creek, and it's a freeway with almost endless capacity. But, it's just letting it get there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, unless you have any other questions for my team, or you'd like to ask for a continuance to the June something meeting?
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth. Somebody looked it up. Thank you. June nineteenth.
I actually do have one more question, and that was for Mrs. Lang.
And I still have my question for the county engineer, but I, I mean, but we know your request to continue.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Can you clarify your statement about the number of accidents and what was the source that you got that information?
Absolutely. I'd love to. DOT showed me how to use their Sogis system, and you can diagram different areas. So, I diagrammed from the east side of Collier Parkway over to Via Bella Drive, just the highway, and included the intersection. So, it was one mile. My husband drove it twice, one mile. And then, I made a smaller diagram just on the Livingston intersection, and that's where the hundred accidents came up. Now, the study, we only have access publicly through, it says two thousand and twenty. It does have a wee bit of information for twenty-two and twenty-three, and I do not have access to current information from that day. So, that is all a little bit older, but it is pretty darn accurate, because I counted each one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, do you have one more question?
Yeah, for Nick, if you don't mind. Sorry, Nick, to put you on the spot.
He's not really.
So, part of the issue we have with fifty-four and forty-one is that DOT keeps telling us that we can't do right-of-way acquisition, we can't do construction until we have an approved PDNE, which is right. I mean, that sounds right to me. You need a designed roadway before you can acquire right-of-way and construct it. They've also told us that we can't even really program it, even though it's part of the SIS system. We can't really program it until we have right-of-way...but I think they may have right-of-way programmed, but realistically, we can't get it built until it's designed, which makes sense. My question is, two questions. One is just confirming, Collier and fifty-four is also part of the SIS system. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So, that intersection is not completely in county control. It's also partially in DOT's control.
Primarily in DOT's control.
Primarily DOT's control. So, what...is it possible to ask DOT, I don't know whether that's through the MPO process or outside the MPO process, to start the PDNE for Collier sooner rather than later? So, that we're not...I mean, the PDNE for fifty-four and forty-one has been going on for like, feels like ten years. I mean, it's now reaching a conclusion, but I mean, but it...and now, we finally started with forty-one going over fifty-four, apparently. Not fifty-four over forty-one. But, I don't want to see us repeat the mistakes we had on fifty-four and forty-one, where we're in a extended PDNE process and we haven't even started... I mean, can we start doing a PDNE now for Collier? Or ask DOT to start a PDNE now for Collier, so that we're not waiting ten years to, you know, assuming we...
Sure.
To get it moving?
And Mr. Chair, just to introduce myself, Nick Uren, county engineer. Absolutely. I'm reminded of the Chinese proverb, the best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago, but the second-best time is right now. And so, the mechanism you would use, the mechanism that Pasco County should use to encourage DOT to accelerate the planning, project development, environmental study for the interchange is to add it to the MPO's priority list. And that's effectively communicating that this, the elected officials representing Pasco County would like to see that interchange accelerated. Let's figure out what we intend to do so that we can do advanced acquisition, take out some of the roadblocks that have plagued us at forty-one and fifty-four, and get a project underway more quickly.
So, I believe that, I don't know if we just approved, they just approved a list of project priorities or if it's still...
Yeah, that was just this past month. That's a once-a-year, but it can be amended. But, it's a once-a-year communication device established by Florida statute that says this group of elected officials is asking the folks administratively at DOT to allocate funds to these various projects on the list.
So, if the county would like MPO to consider adding to the list either now or next year, whatever that is, what...is there a mechanism to do that?
Well, you have five members on the board. Five of the county commissioners sit on the MPO governing board. They could each one individually reach out to the MPO director and ask for that agenda item to be put on a future meeting.
Okay. So, just, we just need a board member to bring it up at MPO, basically?
Sure. Or in a phone call. I don't know what their protocols are for agenda requests, requesting agenda items like that. But, they need to reach out to the director and say, either in the context of a meeting together or separately, can you please calendar this, so that we can have a discussion about it?
I mean, given what you know, what you've heard today, and what you know about the Collier Parkway fifty-four intersection, do you think it's an appropriate request to be making?
Well, sure. I think State Route fifty-four, what the twenty-fourty-five MPO long-range plan identified was the need to make some sort of operational investment in State Route fifty-four, because it's a very busy corridor. And I think what we have now in the twenty-fifty plan is an intent to build an overpass at Collier Parkway and an intent for the county to take on the widening of County Line Road to the south as a parallel capacity investment to maybe alleviate some of the congestion that exists on fifty-four.
So, what that was going to be, my next question is, for the widening of County Line Road, I assume that also needs a PDNE? Is there a process, what would be the process to accelerate that?
So, that one just happens through the county's adoption of a capital improvement program, which, again, occurs on an annual basis. Elected officials can direct county staff at any convened meeting to say, hey, let's see if we can't get this moving forward more quickly. That project is not in our five-year capital program currently, but it certainly could be requested. And then, it's just a question of funding and prioritization against other projects in that part of the county.
Okay. Let me answer my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Good. All right. So, I think we've had a request from the applicant for a continuance until June nineteenth. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to continue to June nineteenth meeting in Newport Ritchie.
Second.
We have a second and a third? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? All right. June nineteenth is the date.
The next item that we have on the agenda is Item P-7, presented by staff.
Good afternoon. Robert Irving, Planning Development and Economic Growth. First thing I want to knock out of the way is there was expertises that were submitted to the clerk for both items, PC-7 and PC-8.
Yes, I'll be recusing myself.
That's all right. It gives a chance for people to leave.
Yeah. From both of these.
Your buttons are costing me that one hand of the gavel over for Mr. Girardi.
Give me that hand.
Assuming it's not bloody.
See what he did to it.
Right. So, this is CPAS twenty-four sixteen, Arcola Townhomes. It's PDE twenty-five zero-zero thirteen, and it's comprehensive plan amendment. And the proposal is from RES One, residential one dwelling unit per gross acre, to RES Nine, nine dwellings per gross acre. And the intent of this amendment is to allow for a maximum development of one hundred and eighty-six platted townhomes. And the project is located on the north side of Crellla Drive, bounded by Ann Hurst Lane on the east side, approximately two hundred and thirty-one feet west of the Sun Coast Parkway. And there is an accompanying MPUD rezoning that you'll hear after this item. Here's the project's location. It's located in the north market area, just north of the urban service area. Here's the aerial. Here's the transportation network, and it's kind of hard to see in this, but in purple outlined on the east-west side of the Sun Coast is the Sun Coast Trail and Crellla Drive. The existing future land use is RES One, which would allow a maximum of twenty-eight homes. The proposed future land use is RES Nine, and that would allow a total of two hundred and fifty-four homes. But, the MPUD conditions of approval cap that at one hundred and eighty-six, and that's a density of six-point-six dwelling units per acre. And the proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies. Policy Flu one-point-one-point-two, concentration of urban densities. Policy HSG one-point-one-point-two, comprehensive plan amendments. Policy Flu one-point-four-point-three, transitional land uses. Policy Flu eight-point-one-point-five, north market area. And Policy Flu one-point-ten-point-one, compatibility. And this comes to you with a recommendation to find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Is there any questions for Robert?
No. Oh, yes. I do have to mention one thing. There is a couple typos on this memo. The density calculation was at thirty acres, and the memo speaks to thirty acres. It's actually twenty-eight-point-two-one for the survey. So, that'll be corrected before the BCC.
Nick Tarraspeto is planning development and economic growth. Just to note, the request is for a density over six, which means that the comprehensive plan... plan has to jump up to RES9 to capture that density. So, the 6.2 or the 6.6 is just to the RES9 at this point. But the density is accurate in the MPUD.
Thank you. Okay, is the applicant present?
Barbara Willhady, 627 Grand Boulevard, Still. For the applicant, NVR Ryan Homes. So when I do these presentations, I just kind of do one. So, I know there's the comp plan, the MPUD, but I just do one. So, here's my presentation. This is the context of where this property is located. You can see to the west is Cruz Lake Middle, and to the, to the south is Mary Giella. Looking at their capacity, not that I can do anything as well as Mr. Williams can do, but Mary Giella, from the capacity analysis, was 81% capacity. Cruz Lake, 47% capacity. So, to me, you don't see those numbers, and that's where some of these projects become pretty important, to get kids in those schools so they don't end up closing. I mean, I think Elfris Elementary is, it's a shame that that, that school closed. So, just my opinion there. This is a context map that shows a lot of what's going on in this area with the two schools that I mentioned. There's a RES9 land use that the county did in, I think, 2022. You can see the PSP, that is the Resource Recovery Plant, the county's facility there. Gary Plastics to the south of, has come in. There's about 300 acres of IL to the south of Gary Plastics. You've got EC, so, and then to the PD that you can see on the, on the east side of Shady Hills Road and the west, that is Greenfield, that's the Polte Project. Del Webb on the east side is 55 and over. West side is going to be mixed use, have some commercial, office, industrial, and those types of uses. This is our plan for our project. Again, these are minimum 24-foot townhomes with no more than six units per building. So they're higher-end townhomes. We have a particular buffer that we looked at for the eastern, eastern boundary. Along our eastern boundary over here. I'm going to get this for you here. We have doubled, we have had an enhanced buffer for that, thinking about, you know, these, these residences over here. This is Ann Hurst Lane right here. You can see Ann Hurst Lane, the dirt road. It is on this property, the client's property that they're purchasing. We're going to dedicate right-of-way so that Ann Hurst Lane can now, you know, exist, not on private property. Our density, as you, as they've said, is 6.59. We're complying with PM 26. We have dedicated visitor parking that exceeds the code. Again, that's 2.25 spaces per unit outside of the driveways and, and the garages. We actually exceeding the parks and open space requirement for this plan, 2.25 acres that we're providing, and we're only required to do one point, it's an eye test here, 8.6. One of the things that is interesting, what we did, and we've done it with each project that's come along Shady Hills in this area, was we looked at bike-ped connectivity. And I'll flip forward a couple things here. This was the plan when Polte came in. This is actually from the PowerPoint. And what Polte did was really focused on this portion of Shady Hills Road, all the way up to here. They filled in these gaps so that on both sides of the road, eight-foot paths on both sides of the road, filled in off-site gaps, all the way up to the school. This project here did more here. And so you start to see, and then the county is going this way up, up Shady Hills Road. So this project, again, in keeping with what's going on and what can this project do for the community, this project is going to do an eight-foot path on the south side of Crellla. Crellla is a lighted, signalized intersection, by the way, at Crellla and, and Shady Hills Road. It's going to do an eight-foot path on the south side of Crellla from Shady Hills to the Suncoast Trail. So, right now, you just have to go in the road, you know, to get there, walk or, or walk on the side of the road, but we'll have an eight-foot multi-use path. On the north side, where our subdivision is, we're going to do a five-foot sidewalk along our frontage, and this, a lot of this is what, how we picked this is based upon a survey of the right-of-way, you know, what can we fit? So five feet along our frontage, the school board asked us to continue that sidewalk off-site to Cruz Lake and to, to be able to get our children to Cruz Lake safely. We also are doing a crossing, we're crossing over, a lighted crossing, I guess a signalized crossing with the flashing lights, to get our children down to Mary Giella. So we coordinated with the school board to get the improvements and agree to the improvements needed to get our kids to school. But then we also looked at, well, what else can we do to add to the bike-ped experience in this area? I can tell you that the county has a project to add a sidewalk up Shady Hills all the way to Bosley. And I was reading staff's report again, and they were mentioning that there's a traffic, there's a bus stop up at Peace, and I guess that sidewalk will go up to that sidewalk, up to that bus stop, which I thought was interesting. See if I have anything interesting here. This is our product, NVR Ryan Homes product. And we have a calculation, not that you could read that, I failed the eye test, but there is a calculation, again, of, of our impact and mobility fees for the project. And that is it for me for the moment. We have our team here. You'll recognize some of them. Jeremy Couch and Steve Henry.
I just have one, Barbara. Thank you for working with us on those sidewalk improvements. What's the, I'm sure it's fine, but just for my knowledge, what's, what's your western landscape buffer? What's that requirement?
Oh, to you?
Yes.
That would be a good question for Jeremy.
Okay, good.
He's going to come up here and hopefully tell you about that.
Sure, no problem.
Chairman Commissioners, Jeremy Couch. Tampa Civil, 17937 Hunting Bow Circle, Lutz, 33558. Commissioner Williams, you are going to test my knowledge of the code off of the top of my head, but I believe it is a 15-foot type B, which requires a six-foot solid fence and a continuous shrub row and evergreen trees every 30 feet. If during review, it's determined that it's larger, we will do the code requirement.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, Ms. Gianna, anybody signed up, I'm assuming?
We do have two individuals signed up to speak on this item, and I'm not sure if they would like to speak to the CPA or the MPUD first. Mary Ann Crandis.
Mr. Chair, I mean, you might want to just open up the public hearing to both items.
Okay.
So they can speak to both.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearings to both items then. So when you're there, you can go ahead and speak to both items if you intended to. Terry?
Mr. Chairman, would you like your presentation on the MPUD first?
Probably a good idea. Yeah, probably should. Sorry about that.
All right, Barbara kind of ran through a lot of the high-level stuff, but I'll try and cover more. Again, it's Robert Irving with Planning Development Economic Growth. This is the Arcola Shady Hills MPUD. It's PDE 257850. It's the location map. The project overview, it's a zoning amendment from AR Agricultural Residential District to MPUD, master planned unit development. It allows for the development of 186 townhome units and associated infrastructure on approximately 28.21 acres. And it's located on the north side of Crellla Drive, approximately 1,275 feet east of the intersection of Crellla Drive and Shady Hills Road. Here's the location map, the zoning map, showing the existing AR, future land use. And on the context map, just as Barbara mentioned, and just to cover a little bit more, Shady Hills Road from Crellla Drive to Bosley Drive, there's a five-foot sidewalk that's currently at 30% design and is anticipated to be constructed in fiscal year 2026. And as mentioned before, you'll see the Mary Giel Elementary School to the south, Cruz Lake Middle School to the west. And also to note, the Crellla Estates Townhome Project, which is just to the southwest, was responsible for constructing an eight-foot multi-use path that brought the path up to Crellla Drive, and then this project will be bringing it to the Suncoast Trail. So that's what's shown on the master plan as well. And in red, you'll see shaded the type B 20-foot buffer. And then you'll see on the north side of Crellla, the five-foot sidewalk that was mentioned that'll connect to the school access, and then the eight-foot multi-use path on the south side. Here is the MPUD binding concept plan. And the applicant requests a variation from 90161 street access to adjoining properties to not provide an interconnect to the west, as that's the existing school property, and it would not be feasible. The applicant providing enhanced pedestrian mobility, or sorry, let me rewind that for a second. PD is in agreement with this variation as it meets the intent of the code, as there's an existing school with fields and recreation to the west side that make it not feasible for an interconnection. And additionally, the applicant providing enhanced pedestrian mobility through the construction of the eight-foot multi-use path, five-foot sidewalk, and the safe crossings with flasher help support the variation. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Okay, very good, thank you. Barbara, Barbara, do you need anything else? Okay. All right, so, back to public comment.
The first individual we have is Ms. Mary Ann Crandis.
Thank you. When you come up, just a reminder, state your name and address and acknowledge that you've been sworn, or we will swear you in if you have not.
Okay, hello, my name is Mary Ann Crandis. I live at 15515 Waxfield Avenue, Spring Hill, Pasco, 34610. Okay, so.
Are you sworn?
So.
Did you swear in earlier?
Yeah, to her, yeah.
Did you swear in when they asked everybody?
Okay.
No, we'll need to get the clerk to swear you in. It's just, she'll go ahead and take care of it.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give, is Teresa helping out?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the reason I'm here today is, I'm, basically, I'm requesting to deny this project that's, that you're talking about behind Cruz Lake Middle School. And, and I'm just basically, I did some research on AI. You know, I use my AI to answer some of these basic questions, and I'm just going to review what some of those are. So, why should houses not be built on wetlands? So, according to AI, houses should not be built on wetlands because these areas are crucial for wildlife habitat, flood protection, and water purification. Building on wetlands can disrupt these ecosystems, lead to environmental damage, and also violate legal regulations protecting these lands. Number two. Okay, so this is AI. What percentage of Florida land is considered wetlands? Wetlands cover approximately 20.3 million acres in Florida, which is more than half of the state's land area. Although the exact percentages can vary, Florida has more wetlands than any other state in the contiguous United States, and that's according to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Another AI question, has the wildlife population in Florida diminished due to building? Yes, the wildlife population in Florida has diminished due to habitat loss and fragmentation caused by urban development and road construction. This has led to increased threats to various species, including reduced genetic diversity and higher mortality rates from vehicle collisions. Number four, what is the motive for overdevelopment in Pasco County, Florida? The motive for overdevelopment in Pasco County, Florida primarily stems from the desire to increase property values and generate additional tax revenue. Source, Tampa Bay Times. Number five, what are the risks for building in a place prone to natural disasters like flooding and hurricanes? Building in areas prone to natural disasters like flooding and hurricanes poses significant risks, including structural damage from high winds, flooding, and flying debris. Additionally, these regions often face challenges such as increased insurance cost, regulatory hurdles, and the need for specialized construction techniques to ensure safety and resilience. So I also was looking up about what are people still dealing with in our area from the 2024 hurricane season? And basically, there was $4 billion in FEMA flood insurance claims. Nearly 40,600 claims made to FEMA National Flood Insurance Program in the Three Carney region amounted to over $4 billion in damages. Tampa Bay accounted for well over half of the flood claims made in Hurricane Helene and Milton nationwide. Okay? So let me skip down to the 42 million gallons of sewage pollution. Okay? So, a state analysis of state pollution reports by the Tampa Bay Estuary showed 48% of waste, okay. So, basically, I, I also talked about a quote from Craig Fugate saying that some people will never recover, they will be financially bankrupt. That was our former, former FEMA administrator and our Florida guy for, and then I also talked about the wellfields in Florida. And a lot of our water that goes south come from our wellfields, like the North Pasco Wellfields. And the future of the Florida aquifer in regards to overdevelopment and water supply, the future of the Florida aquifer is concerning due to order development, which is leading to an increased water demand from the aquifer and that might not be able to sustain. As the population grows and more water is extracted, the aquifer faces significant challenges, including declining water levels and potential shortages. Okay? And in terms of how that area, we don't need more houses in back of that school, or, you know, we don't need, and first of all, those houses are going to be way too expensive, and we need more reasonably priced stuff.
I'd cut you off, but I think your time's up.
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't, I request that you deny it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Curiosity question for the county attorney.
Yes?
I asked AI, is that hearsay evidence, or is that substantial competent evidence?
I don't think it, what matters is her testimony. I don't, I mean, I don't know, it matters what the source of her testimony is, but she's saying.
There's no, you're not bound by former rules of evidence, so even if it is hearsay, you can still accept her testimony. For whatever you think it's worth.
Not much.
Okay. Gianna?
The next individual I have is Pastor Jen, I'm sorry, I'm going to mess up your last name.
Pastor Jen Kerwak, Shady Hills Mission Chapel, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida. I have been sworn. I sent pictures, so don't start my time. And I sent pictures.
Yeah, I think Patty's pulling them up now, I think. Do you know who you sent them to, Jen?
It was like the normal email address that I always send it to, whatever.
The PC admin?
Yeah.
Because I don't have access to that email.
I can try and send it now.
Yeah, I think she's working on it. We won't start your clock yet, Jen.
Don't do it.
How's your day going?
Okay, what's the email? Okay, what's the email?
P C R I S T Y I N G L R N G.
Patty, I just emailed them to you because she sent them to me during the meeting. Did you send them? All right, okay, then I don't have to, do I need to send them then?
I emailed them.
I know.
[laughter]
And then if you just, I don't know how, if you want to scroll through them, these are pictures, and my main concern really is the lack of ability to accommodate the You know, there's a couple of things here, and I'm just going to read right off the memo, I'm just going to speak to it. The North Market area envisioned is a predominantly rural area. If you move down, it says, you know, the goal is, or the mission is to preserve rural lifestyle, agricultural lands, and natural resources. And so we've had an influx of development. We've got 1,200 homes and patio homes and things like that. There's another project that just started clearcutting, burning stuff down. That was from 2022. I haven't even had time to look into it. The concern is, you know, the lack of, we just went through the hurricane season, the county, I just watched the workshop, it's like, I don't know, $84 million that hasn't been paid back. That's funds out of the general account, apparently. And so the lack of ability to even wrap my mind around the fact that the current traffic study is from 2023, which does not even include all that's mentioned in here with regards to compatibility. And I won't even get into the usage of private residential ingress, egress, and utility easements. So that is a big concern of mine, but mostly, there was a young man, 18 years old, David Householder, who was killed at the corner of Greenglen and Shady Hills Road on April 1st of this year. I have been coming to these meetings for a very long time, longer than I even care to recall. No personal, you know, issue there. But we're 63rd out of 67 in counties with regards to how many deputies, the safety of our citizens. 63 out of 67, but Pasco's striving to be a premier county. You know, 30 months away, when somebody moves in from their house, the sheriff is 30 months away. Also, the traffic study, and I'm just trying to make up my notes, 12.7% growth, according to, I believe it was the census, not 2% growth that's noted in the traffic study for transportation needs. 2045, I think Mr. Moody spoke to it earlier with regards to 2045, 2030, I mean, you know, and I've continued to ask when, Shady Hills isn't even on the map. I mean, they say that it is, but it's not. And so, you know, the idea that in our code at, let's see, 901.2, it says that the goal is to, according to Florida statutes, for our, this group here, to do what's in the best interest of the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience of the Shady Hills, Leisure Hills, Hudson citizens. To add this now, it's well ahead of its time. There's 43% of vacant houses, 43% of the housing in Pasco County, according to the census as well, was vacant, Pasco County. So I'm asking, based on this, that you would deny it today, but at a minimum, if you chose not to deny it, I'm asking that Ms. Willhite and her clients would at a minimum have a meeting with the citizens of Shady Hills. We've been opposed to these things for a long time because of the road. Her client's not going to pay for the road, and the county can't afford the road right now. How do you accommodate it? I ask you to deny it.
Jen? Jen?
All right, Jen.
I understand the growth may have been 12%, but it's a code requirement that they use 2%. They're only following the code when they do that. I'm not telling you the code's not broken, but that's how they get away with that.
It was the information, right? The projection is 2% growth. I understand that that's according to many different places, right? But the reality of it is, is 12.7% was the increase.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm telling you, what they're doing is following a broken code. And that's where you're going to have to focus your effort.
But to be clear, I think the code says it's a minimum of 2%. Staff has the ability, based on the growth rate.
When Steve Henry comes up here, we'll ask him how many times he's applied a number higher than 2% to a development, but they, that's what they do.
It's just not, it's not real.
I understand.
It's not fact-based. The decisions should be fact-based, right?
I'm not going to disagree with you about that.
And that was 24, 12.7% growth.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I think that's all. Anybody else? Is that everybody?
There is nobody else signed up for comment on this item.
And nobody on WebEx?
Correct, there's nobody on WebEx.
Thank you.
Barbara Willhite for the applicant. The project has no wetlands. There is, regarding wildlife, obviously, we have listed species requirements that we have to follow. There's also a pretty substantial ecological corridor on the east side of Shady Hills Road as you go across the Suncoast Parkway. So the area does have a significant environmental lands acquisition program there for an ecological corridor. The project has no flood plain, it's Zone X. There will be no sewage pollution, the project's on central water and sewer. There'll be no reclaimed because this property is what, the area that we're in is the Wikiwachi BMAP, so there's no reclaim there. With regard to the North Market area, I think staff actually wrote, I've written a lot of these things myself, and read a lot of these things, but ultimately, the North Market area is envisioned as predominantly rural area with activity centers, employment nodes, and village centers as strategic locations. Development should be concentrated in clusters or nodes with a balance of mutually supportive uses. And staff writes, given the proposed development's proximity to public services such as schools, parks, and roads, and is adjacent to an industrial and public, semi-public lands, the increase in residential density is appropriate in this area to achieve a balance of mutually supportive uses and maintain economic viability, which is consistent with the vision of the North Market area. I'd also remind you of what the school capacity is in this area as well, which also goes to making sure that we have a mutually supportive infrastructure, and that we, where we put infrastructure in, that we have density in those areas. I know that it's a topic of conversation regarding Shady Hills Road. I can tell you that from my conversations, it's, there's support to prioritize Shady Hills Road, that's got to be done by the board. It's ultimately a board issue. We do have, overall, our impact fees and mobility fees are 3.6 million, with the mobility fee share 1.4 million. What we do is, obviously, we pay our fees, but then we also look for those opportunities that what we can do on a project level, where we can make a difference and do something for the community, we did it here. We looked at, we saw an opportunity to get that multi-use path all the way along Crellla to get to the Suncoast Parkway, to make that Suncoast Trail, to make that connection. We saw that opportunity, something our project could do to make a difference, and we're doing that. Steve Henry can come up and talk traffic with you. Do you have any other questions other than traffic that we can answer? Thank you.
On the issue of traffic, thank you for actually attaching the traffic study to this one, Mr. Williams. Good job.
Steve Henry, Links and Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa 33607. So do you have a question?
No, I actually don't.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, since I will, since I told Jen I'd ask you that, how many times do you actually use a growth rate of more than 2% in a traffic study?
I mean, we do it, I would say probably 25 to 50% of the time. I mean, because what we do is, we look at, and in this case, we did use more than 2%. We use 2% plus, we added in the Crellla Estates traffic for their traffic study. So it was actually more than 2%. We had 2%, then added their traffic on top of it. So this was more than 2% at this particular one. But for the most part, what we do is, we look at the historical growth rates in the general area. DOT publishes those, and so we look at the counts, historical counts, and then we, based on that, we either use that if it's higher than 2%, or if it's lower, then we use the 2%. And in this one, because it was a plan amendment, we also used, we did a needs assessment, which used the projected 2045 volumes on Shady Hills. And then the timing and phasing was looking at the build-out of the project with the 2% plus the additional project.
And so to be clear, our county staff has the ability to require him to use more than 2%. I mean, the code says it's 2% unless other reasonable rates are determined to be more appropriate by the county. So if our county staff tells him to use more than 2%, he's got to use more than 2%.
Absolutely. And what we do on 90% of our projects is, in the appendix, we use, we include the DOT historical counts, and then we come up with a growth factor for those to say, okay, here's what the historical growth rate is in the area, and then based on that, we say if it's less than 2%, we use 2%. If it's more, then we use that growth rate. But that is in our traffic studies to document how we come up with that growth rate.
I understand.
Okay, sure.
I understand. Just, you're not going to tell the average member of the public that drives on the roads around here that the traffic grew by 2%. I don't care what the DOT says, I don't care what the county staff says, and I don't care what you say. We all drive around, and we all know what we see. That being said, I don't have any questions about this project.
I would also comment, because this is relevant to the last application, this traffic study does not show any failures.
Correct.
So it does not have the same issue that the last one had. Just pointing out, because as I made a comment, made it sound like all of our traffic studies show failures, they don't.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
Should we make a motion for both?
I'll do one at a time. But you have to do the land use first.
Move to approve item PC 7.
A second.
All right, motion of second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries, and the chairman, Greg, abstained from voting. And now PC 8.
Motion approved. It's P 8.
Motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion carries again. Chairman Greg abstained.
Second?
Matt, one, question ones. Okay.
And that was the conclusion of the agenda today.
Motion adjourned?
Move adjourned. Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
I want to know, it's so much easier when you.